What do you think? Should we begin, everybody? Yes? Okay. All right. All right. So I'm going to make a little announcement. Welcome and good evening to the July 28th School Committee Meeting. These are really unprecedented times with many issues facing us all. There are many serious issues that have been caused by this pandemic. And at the same time, our nation is struggling with combating racism and inequality. There are many in the community who would like to speak about the position of the second SRO in our district. And everyone will get a chance to fully discuss this topic. But we cannot give this topic the attention it deserves tonight. The reopening of our school plan is of utmost importance since we are under strict deadlines by DESI and because parents, students, and teachers and staff need to prepare. It is for this reason that we will be holding weekly school committee meetings every Tuesday at 6:00 until at least the beginning of the school year. Usually, we only hold one month during the summer and two months during the school year, but this will be every week. The issue of the second SRO position will be on the August 11th agenda, when it will be given all the attention it deserves. But tonight and the August 4th meetings must concentrate on the reopening plan and a few items that cannot wait. Thus, when we begin public speak, we will allow 15 minutes total for people to speak for two minutes each about any concerns they have about other issues, such as the SRO or anything else. And at the end of that 15 minutes, I am going to change public speak to have only comments concerning the reopening of schools. At that time, people will be given two minutes each to talk about the reopening of schools and their concerns around that issue. And we will take as many as we possibly can for as long as we can do that. We want to hear from everybody. Okay, so I am asking that if you want to discuss the SRO position, that you hold your comments or at least most of your comments until the August 11th meeting. Okay? I think we're going to have a large number of people here. I'm seeing 112 right now. So I'm going to ask that if we start to get feedback, that we might ask you to turn your video off if you are not on the school committee or the mayor. Right now, that's not necessary, I think. But if we start to have too much feedback, and please keep muted, we will try to mute you until you are actually speaking. Okay? All right. At this time, we will take a rule call to start the meeting. And then I will turn it over to Dr. Leclerc for announcements. So Marissa?
Marissa Curry here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
And Miralache Chappell. Whoa, you're unmuted.
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Cynthia Kuzinski here. So I think I called everybody. I'm looking at this, it's getting big. And so I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Leclerc for announcements.
Thank you. I'm going to just do the announcements when I have my section of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on our list is, do we have gifts?
We do have one gift. Just a moment, sorry, I'm sort of navigating between screens here. We would like to vote to accept with gratitude a gift from Dandelion's Florist, who generously donated roses for the graduation ceremony for the class of 2020.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All right, we'll call a vote. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. All right. So we, the next section of our meeting is public speak. Again, the first 15 minutes can be about other issues. After that, it will be about the reopening of schools. So I ask that you raise your hand, or we're going to keep scrolling through. You could put in the chat down below that you would like to talk. And I will begin it for 15 minutes, starting now. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I already see some hands lined up.
I'm going to let you let them in.
Great, so we'll start with Mindy J.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I understand this meeting will focus on reopening plans, so I'll save my more in-depth questions for the August 11th meeting. However, I would like to voice my strong opposition to having a resource officer at any of our schools. Placing police in schools increases the risk of criminalizing children, specifically Black and Brown children. Also, children who have diagnosed problems with emotional and social regulation will be susceptible to police intervention. This is terrifying. There is no evidence that school resource officers make schools safer. In fact, many school districts, including surrounding communities, such as Northampton and Amherst, are eliminating this position altogether. There is absolutely no rationale, no data that would suggest the necessity for a school resource officer in East Hampton. And in light of the racist history at the high school, one that is directly linked to the presence of a resource officer, I am beyond shocked and disappointed. I am infuriated that this administration would not only continue to support having one officer, but aid in the attempt for another. This is not about getting to know an officer or whether or not the officer is a nice person or a decent person. This is about dismantling a system of prejudice and power, one that has deeply and adversely affected my family and several others in our community. This is about school administrators taking accountability for the safety and well-being of our students and taking that responsibility out of the hands of police. We need more capable and culturally competent administrators, teachers, counselors, and social workers in our schools, not more police. Thank you.
Anybody else? So you're muted. You might want to stay unmuted so you couldn't call people in.
Myra has had a hand up, so I will put that unmuted there.
Hello. My name is Myra Oyazemi. I'm a parent of two children in the East Hampton Public Schools. And I thank you for the opportunity to have the Parent Forum, which I found raised a lot of questions as we're all trying to navigate moving target in terms of school opening. And I have a number of concerns. And my main concern is speaking to the practical. We just have a few weeks before school opening. And I would like this committee and even the mayor is here to, and the town, to think about, think proactively in terms of how parents can move forward. Many of the parents relied on the before and after-school programs. How do we move forward if we're not sure how we're opening, if there's care? Also, we're speaking about seeking grants for an RSO, but I'm not sure that's speaking to the concerns and then the times at the moment of parents looking for innovative solutions outside of the after-school and before-school care that's provided. Right now, it seems to be champions. I would like for this committee and for our elected officials to be able to start thinking of other funding sources for before and after-school care. And this is post the pandemic and during the pandemic. So we as parents who have the burden of working and also supervision of students during potential hybrid learning environments know what to do. And I would like to address the issue of the RSO. You said that it will get all the attention that it needs in the next meeting. However, I would like to offer up that unless you have the voices of the people that are closely impacted, the people that are closest to the pain, closest to the power, that are speaking to this decision, meaning our students, have input, I think one should not move forward without getting student input, parent input, and having an open dialogue before committing to such. And I call for a really robust discussion to talk about alternatives and really get community input. If we're seeking grants, let's seek grants that speak to, that speak to our wants as a community and the vision of our school, our schools. And perhaps that those grants that can be sought for could not be relegated to an RSO, but also looking to support a full-time, 40-hour position of the Diversity Center Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see a hand from Louise.
All right, yeah. Hi, can you hear me? Working, thank you. Um, okay, I'm Louise from, my name's from Precinct 3. And I'm afraid I'm also here to speak about the proposal for an SRO in the middle school. And, okay. And I see from the agenda that it's like, and I've heard what you've just said, Cynthia, but mostly it's a progress report on the grant. And I was just really upset to see that there had not been a public discussion of the advisability of putting a police officer, a second one, and in the middle school of all places, even before the grant was applied for. And having said that, sorry, I'm not good. I'm the relative of a middle-aged, middle-race, I'm middle, middle, sorry, mixed-race family. And that family seriously considered moving to East Hampton a few years ago. And they had family here. Without getting too personal about them, but it was the EHS incident that had just happened and some other kind of things that one of the parents, nebulous things that the parent claimed, felt on the streets and all here, that decided them against East Hampton as an option, even though that family and the kids had been visiting here because there's two different relatives, not just me, for summers for some years. So that's where I'm coming from here. With COVID now, I've been watching from afar while these two kids, especially the pre-teen, dealt over the last few months with the George Floyd tragedy, the Black Lives Matter movement, their own identity. And just watching, I know there's a lot of parents who can't speak and have the experience right here and now, but just watching the kids I'm connected with, I can tell you that putting a police officer in a middle school, if it had been their middle school and whoever, however qualified, I'm just saying, even a black cop, and actually their father is a friend who's a black cop, but, and you don't see many of those in East Hampton, sorry, I'm just saying, I feel very emotional that watching this identity, watching 11, 12-year-old deal with what's going on in the world. This is a really bad idea to make. Maybe if EPD wants to, there are ways for them to reach out, to visit classes, to start a dialogue. But to put an officer on the campus as part of the, in kids' view, they're going to be part of the staff, whether they are or not. That's how kids between 8, 9, and 12 think. And I'm just saying, please consider this from the com, and somebody like Myra can speak to this better than me, but please, more knowledgeably and more locally, but please consider this from the complicated view of kids who are in that position now, even though they're a minority in the middle school.
Okay, thank you, Louise.
Sorry, one quick question, yes, I know. And I know you can't answer me directly, but on your page, there's no recording of the middle-school age meeting last week. There were recordings of the high school and the little kids. And I just want to get that out there somewhere.
Thank you. Thank you. We have six more minutes, and then we're going to start about just schools.
I see a hand from Lynn.
I'm going to wait to speak because I want to speak about reopening. And I want to give time to people who would want to speak about the resource officer.
Fantastic. Next is Ami.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks.
I just want to make sure that I'm not getting in front of a parent or a VOC to make sure that those six minutes are used by folks of color and parents with kids of color regarding the resource officer.
Ami, I'm not seeing anyone else with their hand up at this point. If I'm missing someone, please, if anyone sees someone, let me know.
I just wanted to defer.
Thank you.
Okay. I did write a letter, and I just wanted to speak it out. I live at 28 Oliver Street, East Hampton. And I learned about the resource officer for both the high school and middle school. And if I'm correct, also, middle school would include preschool. And I have great problems with this, not just because of last year's high school racist stuff that went down directly involving the RO and family, but because it affects on a daily basis, our implicit bias. I don't care that the money is free. I don't care that right now we're trying to talk about opening. I mean, I do care, but I care that we're actually talking about putting cops in schools again and further into our schools when there are teachers in our district who are nationally and locally and nationally underpaid, that we don't have enough nurses and counselors and programs for kids with needs. And I would vote for a new school over and over, but I will always speak out against cops in schools. It doesn't make kids feel safe. It doesn't make the parents of kids feel safer. And I think it's really hypocritical of the city saying, yeah, we're all about city rights, human, sorry, human rights and civil rights, but we're going to put police in our school. And it doesn't make us safer. It doesn't make the children any safer. And so I'm very strongly against any grant money or any money being received and the idea of a resource officer for any of our schools. And that it be placed on the agenda for them. And it was, though. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Because there are so many people, if you use the, I'm really using the emoji hand that shows up next to the participant names. It seems easier than scrolling through everyone's faces looking for actual hands. So if you would like to speak and if you could use that function, it would be really great.
I'm seeing Lynn, Marie, I think it's Wanamaker. You see that hand up?
Yep, I'm here now. Thank you. Yes, my name is Marie Wanamaker. I wanted to speak about reopening. I'm the parent of a rising senior. And I wanted to thank my neighbors who were prepared to speak to the proposal about a resource officer. I think that's a critically important issue. And I'm really glad that they were prepared to raise their voices on that tonight. I know that as you are facing this really impossible decision about how to educate during a pandemic, you are also thinking seriously about the other services that schools provide beyond education. Some of these services have already been spoken to tonight. Free and low-cost childcare, free and low-cost meals. There's a whole range of services. I don't have to tell you, you're the professionals. Support for families at risk of violence, support for children with disabilities, respite for their parents, mental health, psychosocial support for kids and families. Schools do so much beyond educating. And I want to say that none of this is a rationale for in-person school for all students. Opening schools too soon will risk students' lives, will risk their teachers' lives, it will risk their parents' lives. Exposure through the schools will prolong the virus's spread, and it will expand the economic suffering in our region. Just this week, there was an outbreak of COVID at Bay State Medical Center, due in part to staff who failed to maintain social distancing and mask-wearing protocols. We cannot believe that children and teenagers are going to be better at maintaining public health protocols than hospital workers. I really believe that we can meet the educational needs of many or even most students through remote learning. And that I urge you to limit in-person learning to those students whose needs make it necessary for them to be in the buildings physically, to really severely limit how many people have access to those buildings. We can meet the needs, the extra needs beyond education of the children and families in our community in other safer ways than opening school as business as usual. But we can't do that if we keep wasting time pretending that opening school is a reasonable expectation in just over a month or by continuing to accept that schools are the appropriate location for these noneducational services. So that's the only way that we can do things. We have an opportunity in this crisis to be innovative and to be really caring and empathic about our neighbors, to really take these needs seriously and not push them off as extra things that the teachers in our community have to make happen, but instead, really show up for each other. The first step in identifying these safe and innovative and creative and loving ways of showing up for each other is to make the smart call of not reopening school. It's only then, when you've drawn that line, that we're faced with how are we going to do the rest of this stuff? And I think we can do it. There is enough love and energy in East Hampton. This is a powerful moment. I am proud to be part of this community. We can do this, but we can't keep dragging our feet and pretending and juggling these three different options. We have to make a decision. We have to make it fast, and we have to start getting creative and getting to work. Thank you for listening.
So, thank you. And that was about schools. But I'm asking now that all comments, this will be an extended public speak. But I'm asking that all comments concern the reopening of school from this moment on. Thank you. Marissa?
I see a hand from Trish.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Leclerc and school board members. My name is Trish Heed. We have a student who will be a rising fifth grader this fall at Whitebrook. We also have a daughter who is a pre-professional dancer who, who's school choice is to Pioneer Valley Performing Arts Charter School, who will be a rising ninth grader. So I appreciate that our family has a somewhat different perspective. Our older daughter will be doing remote learning at PVPA this fall as the school facilities, as well as its unique population from over 50 cities and towns in the Pioneer Valley, does not lend itself well to in-person instruction. This has made the decision easier for us as a family with a member with a chronic health condition and an elderly parent who resides with us to decide to pursue remote learning in the fall for our middle schooler as well. We appreciate the position of privilege that allows us to make this choice and have a parent stay at home to facilitate remote learning. Our greatest desire would be to keep our fifth grader enrolled at EPS. We do not want to, we do not want the district to lose the funding allotted for our middle schooler, and we would like our student to remain with her current learning cohort. Our first concerns have been with the quality of remote learning the school will provide. Our first concerns have been about the talk of an instructional design professional to be hired to facilitate an appropriate, engaging, full-year curriculum. The dwindling time to create a school and grade-specific curriculum seems almost insurmountable. The dwindling time to create a school and grade-specific, sorry, details about such a person or hopefully persons has been very lacking. And too often, we have seen this conversation turn to the hiring of a technology support person who is not the same as a person who does professional instruction design with a focus on remote learning. Our newest concerns have been about boxed curriculum with names of Edgacer and Edge Annuity thrown out or used as quote placeholders. These platforms are typically self-directed, and there has been no clear answer as to how this would integrate with EPS, the hybrid model curriculum, and to what extent there would be EPS teacher involvement and support and cohort interaction. As a family who has made their decision for full remote learning, it is imperative that these issues be adequately addressed if we are to keep our child enrolled in the district. Thank you.
Kira?
Thank you. My name is Kira Henninger, and I'm a parent of two incoming second graders at Maple Elementary School. I'm also a school psychologist in a neighboring district, giving me multiple perspectives on the multiple, sorry, multiple perspectives.
It's because I read the same sentence twice, twice.
Enormous challenges facing all of us as we try our best to plan for school this fall amidst a national pandemic. I will be brief, as I am in complete agreement and support with the letter written by the Steering Committee for the East Hampton Public School Parent Advocacy Group. And I encourage all of you to take these points into serious consideration. I would draw special attention and consideration to the points about having a high-quality, engaging, remote-learning curriculum, as that will likely be our reality for at least part of the school year. And secondly, about not providing any in-person school until the buildings are assessed and made safe. The leadership at the federal and state level have put you as local leaders in an awful position, expecting so much while offering few resources to support a plan for opening in a safe and meaningful way. I think the letter you received from the East Hampton Parents Group shows that we are here to offer you support in the form of advocacy and collaboration. Thank you all for the tremendous amount of hours and work you've put in over these last several months. I am incredibly appreciative, and I feel so fortunate to live in such a supportive and engaging community. Thank you for your time.
Great. I had seen people before. I thought there were four more hands at least.
If you use, if you'd like to speak and you use the reactions button at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand, I will be likely to see you more quickly. Cindy, right now, I'm not seeing anyone.
I know, I'm looking, scrolling back. Hurry, hurry, if anybody wants to talk, signal to us.
Oh, I'm seeing Benjamin Hershey here, that's on there.
Thank you, Marissa. I have a rising second grader at Maple, and I'm a East Hampton resident for the last seven years. I'm also a faculty member at Holyoke Community College. And I've been teaching online for the last 10 years. And I've been involved in education for, as a career, for 20 years. And I, you know, like, as I think, as Kira said, I have many different kinds of perspectives on this situation. But I want to say that, for one thing, I have had the incredible privilege of witnessing how hard people are working right now to make this, to make sense of this situation, specifically teachers in East Hampton who are, you know, wrestling every day, all the time with this. And I just want to salute them. And I'm incredibly grateful for the work they're putting in. And at the same time, over the last sort of six weeks or so, I've had this unbelievable privilege to get to know an enormous number of parents who are also wrestling beyond belief with this situation every day. And I know that, that everybody knows that, but I want to just insist that we, we as a community, as a district, make a point to exercise leadership. And in my sort of dream, in my dream world, East Hampton becomes a leader and isn't just a kind of soldier in the DESI army of districts. Like, I don't want East Hampton to just saddle up and do what East Hampton is supposed to do, according to Commissioner Jeffrey Riley, with his drip-drop philosophy of like, giving us guidance here and there. Whenever, I guess, he feels like it, 2:00 in the morning on a Friday night, here's your remote guidance that you're going to need. It's incredibly frustrating, and the fact that there's not enough time to actually get, to give feedback is also incredibly frustrating because I've seen firsthand, you know, there's 143 people here right now. Parents should be able to speak to what they're about to see tonight. And it's unfortunate that we're not going to have time to really offer substantial that we're not going to have time to really offer substantial feedback. So I think, I think, I just want to say, in lieu of that, East Hampton parents are here for you. We are prepared to have an open dialogue with you with no forceful, angry, you know, takeover, take-over-the-world kind of attitude. We're here for you. We want to help. We're here to support all the kids in this town. And we really want to insist that East Hampton searches out community input. Come, come out, reach out to us, we're here for you. We will do whatever we can. I've just been so stunned by how unbelievable people are here. Also, finally, maybe, the Edge Annuity sort of approach to curriculum is also incredibly frustrating, and I think we need to find better ways to exercise leadership there, where I want, I want our faculty and teachers in East Hampton to be able to work, you know, with each student according to their needs, and not just some platform that some company has designed. These companies maybe have their heart in the right place, but at the same time, I'm incredibly skeptical of that. And again, and finally, Desi has not put us in a good position, so I'm sympathetic to this work. But please, please know, like, this is a community, and we're here, we're ready to go. Whatever you need, like, reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Casey has a hand up.
Yep. And then Agnes, but Casey first. Casey?
Hi, sorry, I was on mute.
That's okay.
My name is Casey Rue. I am a parent in East Hampton. I have a rising first grader and a rising fourth grader at Maple. And I, I love our community. I love our community, I love our school, and I am 100% in support of the letter that the Parent Advocacy Group drafted and sent out today. I would urge everyone to read it if you haven't already. It's very thoughtfully laid out, and I think that one of the things that it points out that I find very important is that we all do actually recognize what strain everyone is under, from administrators to teachers to parents. And, but with that said, knowing that the limitations we have on our physical buildings themselves, I don't personally see any scenario where I would be comfortable sending my children in. I would prefer that those that need to have their children there for face-to-face teaching, whether it be due to social issues, any kind of IEPs, 504s, anything that they have, and then parents who also don't have the flexibility, those, I feel that they should be prioritized at this point, which I know that the new Desi ruling says that they will be. But with that said, I think it's obvious that we're going to end up in quarantine and in lockdown, probably more often than not. And as it says in that letter, I think that our priority at this point going forward needs to be ensuring that we have a functional, high-quality, remote-learning process in place that gives the teachers the opportunity to be as flexible as they need to be. I mean, everyone was basically shot out of a cannon in March when this happened, and everyone did the best they could. And even with that flying by the seat of our pants, I can't, I can't tell you how wonderful my kids' teachers were. They did everything and anything, and it was devastating for them to not have that face-to-face contact with the children, but they know our kids, and I trust them, I trust our teachers, and I want the administration to trust the parents to be a part of this process also. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Agnes?
Sorry, Marissa.
No, thank you. Hi, my name is Agnes Kaufman, and I have a fifth grader entering Whitebrook and also a sixth grader. And I'm hearing everybody's concerns. I echo all the concerns out there, but my concern is actually more on the flip side. I am actually, and I don't know what the right answer is, but my children did not do well with online learning. Both myself and my husband are healthcare workers, and we are expected to be at work. And I struggled with providing support for them, and as much as the teachers tried to support my children, it just, it was difficult. It was difficult on many levels. It was overwhelming from them, it was very self-paced, self-learning, you know, trying to go through the emails, trying to go to figure out what's due, how do you turn it in? I mean, on just so many levels, it was very challenging. And I get it, I don't know, like I said, I don't know what the right answer is. I personally would like my children to go back to school. Now, will that change? You know, could we have more outbreaks? Of course we can, you know, what is that going to look like? I think there needs to be some sort of very, you know, a plan in place. I think the children who have special needs or have certain IEPs or 504 plans, they need to, like, they need to be prioritized. I think, you know, that really needs to be looked at, because I feel like my children are now behind, and I'm sure other parents feel the same way, but I don't have a choice come fall. I have to go to work, and I can't do self-learning. I can't be on them saying, okay, you know, what did you learn? How are you going to get this done? And I just don't have the resources. And I'm hearing all this support, like, okay, East Hampton is amazing, they do have great, you know, parents out there and community, and, but I feel like, how am I going to access that for my children? How am I going to get that support where, where I need that, you know, for that online hybrid learning? I feel like I won't be able to access that. So those are my concerns, you know, and I don't know what the right thing is right now, but I feel like we need a better plan. We need a better plan moving forward, we need to identify the children that need better support, and that's my biggest concern right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Sarah has.
You saw somebody, were you able to unmute them, Cindy?
Sarah, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to give a nice clap to Agnes. You know, I am a single mom, and I do rely on, in school, learning. Remote was very hard for me as a single mom to try and juggle work, but also be home to homeschool. So I really support trying to get kids back in school, although I do hear everybody else and hear how schools may not be safe for in-school and learning and all that, and hybrid or remote is the best option, but for me, as a single mom who works in healthcare, it is, it is hard for me to, to do a full remote learning.
That's awesome. Thank you. I'm looking for, oh, there's Jean. Elise? Jean first.
Hi, everybody, good evening. My name is Jean Libby. I have a student who will be in first grade at Maple this fall, and I wanted to thank everybody. I mean, this has been an incredibly difficult process for everybody, so I want to especially thank the work of the parents of East Hampton, who have been coming together to share and support each other, both back in March and then now through the summer, as we face these unprecedented, overwhelming challenges that we're facing as a community this fall. I also want to recognize the challenge that the superintendent and the school committee, as well as all of the administrative staff and teachers, as they're staring into, you know, what seems to be just an insane, insane challenge. And there is not really any good options. I think that that's my biggest frustration, is that I've ran this all in my head a million times, and there isn't any good choice, and I think that that's the hardest thing that we're all going to have to continue to work through together. I want to underscore again, as many parents have, the importance of a cohesive and robust remote education program as the center of our East Hampton School Fall Plans. As many have mentioned before, we need to construct this now, and we need to prioritize it, as it appears students will be accessing learning-from-home options at some point this year, whether we are hybrid or fully remote. At points, we're going to have to have some sort of online program, and we can't plan that last. I'm extremely concerned also about the physical state of the PK-8 schools. We have already, as a community, just determined that we are going to replace those schools due to some of the concerns that are now surfacing. How are we going to manage airflow in classrooms that are too hot or will be too cold with windows open in the winter? Additionally, we have recently heard of extended long wait times for COVID testing, which will immediately derail any in-person portions of our reopening plan, and that has to be, like, paramount. We can't reopen if there's not any testing available. For this and many other issues, we have elected to keep our child fully remote beginning this fall. I believe that by keeping my child home, because I am able enough to do this and meet her needs enough, we didn't have a great remote time, but she's in first grade, and I feel like we can do this, that I will be able to, if I take my child out, I'm doing that with the intention to allow students with more significant needs, other vulnerabilities, or who have parents who aren't able to stay home with them, to attend in-person, and they deserve that in-person learning. That includes the communities that Desi has outlined, students with IEPs and 504 plans, English as a second language students, foster youth, but I would also like to advocate and emphasize, students who need, or families who need their kids to be in school, such as Agnes and Sarah previously mentioned. We need that community plan that includes childcare, before and after-care options. So I'm choosing to move my child remote so that I can give space to these other families that might need to be there more time than two days a week. As an at-home learning family, I look forward to participating in a robust, flexible curriculum that many of the parents earlier have highlighted so well. I have a feeling that there are many families who are like me, who are planning to go remote with that same intention, to give space to other families who may need that in-person learning more. So I would call for some urgent and immediate surveying of families of where they're at. I think a lot of families have changed their minds, I have, since June. And I am also, I wanted to put out there that I am committed to be remaining enrolled as an East Hampton Public School family. I do believe that public education is the foundation of what we should do as a society, so I will remain enrolled, even if the remote plan is not to my personal satisfaction. I am committed to helping support East Hampton so that it can become a school district in the next year, two, or five, that we can be really proud of, that we can do together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marissa, I saw Elise, Alice, and Penny in that order.
I am Elise Langer-Smith. I have a rising fourth grader at Center Peppin and a rising kindergartner. I want to thank everybody who's spoken before me. There's so much that I agree with that I could repeat and won't. What I'm struck by, though, is the amount of support and nuance that is being used in this conversation. I appreciate the call to outside the box in terms of solutions and the generosity and support that parents are offering to each other in terms of keeping children home to make room for students who need to be in school. And I think that there are many, I don't know if solutions is the right word, but many things that can be offered, many things that can happen with enough creativity of thought around the nuance of this situation. I don't think there's one right way to do this, or one wrong way to do this. I think that there are probably going to be many, many, many ways we will need to return to school in the fall. I want to speak about a fear I have of the slippery slope of privatizing education. I have become nervous as I read about various curricula in a box, or, and I'm speaking to this based on rumor. I don't know what the plans are, I don't know what kind of curriculum options are being looked into, but as was just stated by Jean, I believe that public school education is really the foundation of democracy, and it's one of the most important things that we do in this country. And I am, I have been a public school teacher, a public school elementary and middle school teacher, and I've seen firsthand how companies become entrenched in testing and curriculum development, and I believe that there's enough creativity, enough resources, enough, just enough being offered by the stakeholders in the community that we don't need to rely on privatization, and we should be focusing on the resources that we currently already have, and not more purchasing outside the district. I want our resources to be focused on our own teachers, our own students, our own families, the staff, every, all the stakeholders, everybody. And I am hoping, with that focus, that there is a, an effort to have some horizontal alignment across grade levels so that, you know, my fourth grader is, is, is at least having similar resources to other fourth graders, and so I'm not necessarily the exact same experience, because that's not the nuance that I'm looking for. I just, I feel very, very pleased with the virtual learning experience my, my, my rising fourth grader had in the spring, but I know that she did something very different than some other students, and so I'm hoping there is some effort put into providing just equity, equity in terms of resources and thought and nuance in this conversation, and a focus on social, emotional learning as well. Thank you very much.
Is that Alice was next?
Yep.
And then Penny and Shelby, I saw as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alice Wannamaker. I am a rising senior at East Hampton High School, and I wanted to talk a little bit about my experience as a student throughout this whole situation. So, we obviously went online in March, and for a multitude, multitude of reasons, a lot of them concerning equity in terms of how much time and how much technology students had available, the educational requirements were lowered significantly for the spring semester, so that nobody would fall behind or be penalized because they weren't able to engage during this time, which I think was a really wonderful and moral idea, and also not exactly what it's going to look like in the fall if it's remote. So, a little bit about my situation at home. I am, one of my parents is immunocompromised. I will not be attending school in person in the fall as much as I want to. If it's offered, I will be home. I am very dismayed, I guess, and feel nervous about the idea of not having access to the teachers that I know and love if I choose to do this, and instead being part of a different program, to the point where I have the, my educational needs will be met, and my parents have the resources that if such a program is what I would have access to through HS, I will not be attending it. I will be pursuing dual enrollment at Holyoke Community College through their virtual classes instead. They chose to go virtual. I believe in April, they've got a lot of infrastructure set up for that, and I, I want to have in-person classes, I want to have in-person teachers, and I know that I'll be able to get that at HCC. Students who can't afford that, or students who aren't ready for college classes, don't have that option, and I'm concerned about what resources they'll have access to if they're part of an online program. But that's what's working for me, and as sad as that would make me, it makes me feel really good to know that I'll be able to be in virtual classes with actual teachers, which is what, which is where I want to be. I want to talk a little bit about the general high school experience. There was, I had very limited engagement with my teachers this past semester, but the engagement that I did have, that I did have was really, really important to me. I had a couple of personal meetings with teachers in my history classes. I was part of our We the People team. We were on Zoom for three hours a day for two months studying, and that was exactly where we wanted to be, and we were focused and we were engaged, and that was a really positive thing for my mental health. So what I just want to say, for teenagers in particular, is that we are very tech-savvy, and we are very prepared to engage with each other in a is that we are very tech savvy and we are very prepared to engage with each other in a virtual setting. We can, with the help of our wonderful teachers, create a really positive and supportive environment for ourselves through Zoom. We don't need to be in the classroom in order to do that. I will also say that teenagers are really good at hacking the system, so to speak. I know that I was able to really minimize the amount of work I was doing in the spring semester in order to get the grades I needed. And it really concerns me that engagement will be minimal if we're in a self-directed program. Because from my experience, having done several self-directed online classes, it is very, very easy to do the bare minimum in those classes and never actually engage and never learn very much. And it's really wonderful to have daily or several times a week Zoom meetings with your teachers and learn things in that front. And I know that the experience is different for younger kids who need to be, whose parents need them to have childcare. I think that's a really important distinction. And I know that there are some kids in my high school who definitely need to be in a classroom. But I would say for the most part, high school students are uniquely situated that we can really handle online learning if we're given access to our teachers through meetings, if we're able to have that context. And I will say personally, that I really don't want to lose those experiences in the fall semester. I'm planning to take AP Psychology, which I'm so, so, so excited that we just started having. Theoretically this fall, I'm preparing, I'm preparing to intern in the We the People classroom this fall, and I really, really want to be there. And I don't want to lose the experience of being with my teachers, even if it's over Zoom, because it being over Zoom has been such a positive part of my life. And the last thing that I want to say is that I'm not particularly concerned about being behind this year because the entire world is behind. Like, no one's expecting me to graduate this spring with a non-COVID educational experience. I don't particularly care what I learn this fall. I just want to be in meeting with the teachers that I love. And I, I just hope that I am still able to engage in that way. I think that for most high schoolers, that would be a really positive and really safe way for them to engage. And I encourage you to let high schoolers who are staying home have that experience of being with each other and being with our teachers in a way that keeps our community physically safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So Penny? Marissa?
Hi there. You can hear me, awesome. I have a rising freshman. And so I, I just thank you for navigating these, what is it? Six pages of online computer, six pages of participants and giving us this opportunity. And I can't imagine how much, how many factors and variables must be dealt with. And I appreciate that, and I do understand that. I am, though, pretty concerned about vocational school. And I know that EHS is certainly at the mercy of, you know, what all the, you know, with what CTEC's doing and all of that. But, and we haven't had a lot of information yet. And I understand that vocational is going to be tough to do online. But I just, without knowing enough, my imagination goes a little crazy. And being a house where we do have one parent with a condition that is not great for COVID, I feel like it's a bit of a, is it going to be a Petri dish? You know what? I'm just really concerned that, what I hoped is that there could even be potentially ways to really reduce the class sizes or maybe even incorporate some online vocational learning, which is a tall order. But I just don't hear it talked about much, you know? And I know it's TBD all round, but that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby? Marissa?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, so many good points shared. I don't want to echo at all, but a few of my own thoughts. I am a parent of a rising fifth grader and sixth grader. So both kids going into Whitebrook Middle School. I'm also a clinical child psychologist working at Bay State. And my husband works in the Studio Arts Department at Amherst College, where he has been really instrumental in trying to design the safety plans for students coming back to the studio spaces. And I am obviously working in a setting that just had an outbreak. And I come into the office a couple of days a week and see all the very careful protocols put in place to try to keep people from having outbreaks here. And it just illustrates how many factors you all are considering in terms of creating a safe space and, and also meeting the needs of the students, both on an educational and for me, I really think about the socio, socio-emotional level. Because of my work in clinical psychology, working with kids, I see, I've seen a lot of different districts and the ways that they handled the learning in the spring. And I know everybody was just operating on the fly. I feel like we have an opportunity to really carefully design a remote curriculum that hopefully can meet the needs of all of our students, because all of our students will be remote for a good portion of their time, if not entirely. And some of the concerns that came to my mind, and I know we haven't heard what the full plan is, but for those who opt to be fully remote, if they will continue to have access to their cohort of peers, if they will have a regular teaching team, if they will have a similar experience to those who are able to go in for class, if those will be two very different tracks or if they will be aligned. And to my view, although our kids did really okay and we are able to work from home, and so we're in a place of privilege and I think intend to keep them home in the fall, some of the things that I really feel are important, not just that active, regular, live engagement with their peers and their teachers. I think it's okay to use an existing curriculum and not try to reinvent that at this point in the game. But to really be incorporating movement breaks, socio-emotional connection time, specials such as music, art, PE, however those can be engaged. And I think our teachers at Center Peppin last year did a really good job and at Whitebrook. And both of my kids have done some virtual summer camps. And I mentioned this on a, on a parent forum over Facebook where they have been on Zoom calls half a day, a whole day, and really loved it and really were able to engage and make friends and be engaging with different adults. I don't want my kids on Zoom all the time, but I think there are ways to do it if it's really carefully planned, where there's breakout rooms and there's different staffing arrangements that can really have kids feel like they're not just staring at a screen. So I want this to be thought about really creatively. And I'm glad there's a little bit more time to develop that than there originally was. Thank you.
Marissa, I saw M. Drysdale and then J. Zarv. Is M. Drysdale still?
For the moment, because I'm breastfeeding my baby. But I'm going to try to come back to you in a minute.
Okay, so we'll do J. Zarv now. Is that okay, Marissa?
Yeah, of course.
Hi, Jamie Zarvis. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, Jamie Zarvis of 18 Chestnut Street. Great feedback, great participation from everyone. I am a mother of a rising senior, so I have concerns as a parent. But I'm actually, want to speak more to the concerns of teachers. I am a teacher in a neighboring district. And, you know, I hear us talk a lot about developing this robust curriculum for online learning, remote learning and everything. And we, teachers are facing the challenge of our lifetime right now. So what I would like to hear more about and to see more is the tools, the resources, and the time. How can we, as teachers, and I can't speak for East Hampton teachers, but in general throughout the state, how can we be supported to develop and to have these tools so that we can ensure the educational, and meet the educational needs of our students? And I really feel like time, the time to develop these things is critical because we are flying without a plan right now. And it's frightening. And, and I'd really like to hear more and to ensure that, you know, we, teachers aren't kind of left to the, to the last second where we, they can start to develop these plans, that it's a continuing dialogue and it's very transparent. Thank you.
Marissa, do we want to go to Myra to buy some time? Myra's hand is up. You see Myra?
Yes, yes, hello. Hi. Again, I know the incredible difficult situation that everyone is in. I also work for a school district providing services as a speech-language pathologist. And I think it's also important that the school committee and planners know the dynamics and the changes that COVID has caused different families. For instance, I'll speak to myself as someone who works in the school and is working on a reopening committee. Personally, I'm affected. I'm, by circumstance, essentially a single mind due to the fact that my husband has been trapped in another country since February. And I just want, I hear a lot of members saying that they're able to have the option of speak, of doing things virtually and remotely. During this time, my children, well, I can speak to my middle schooler doing excellently well when he arrived and having in-person classes. But some people, I think it was Agnes, was saying how they can't meet those expectations while still doing their jobs, while I'm still sitting in an IEP meeting on behalf of other students. And I just want to make sure that the plans that are put out there don't create further inequity for essential workers, for those who are impacted by the digital divide. We're speaking about parents speaking to, speaking remotely out of a point of privilege. Some people have been truly affected by COVID. My family being one, where a family member is trapped on an entirely another continent and has impacted the family structure, have impacted learning, how we would run our home. So I think, you know, I know everyone is in a terrible situation. No option is best. I think it's fundamental that we find out further data from families, not just spring data, to see how people have been affected by COVID. Because not, because many of us don't have that opportunity. And in our developing of remote plans, we have to think about the inequity that we may inherently place upon children of essential workers or people who must work. And I just wanted to speak to that and speak to my own situation of having a husband who is trapped overseas, who is an academic, speaking as a speech-language pathologist in another district, who deeply cares about vulnerable voices. And I just want to make sure that all those things are considered and that we really have plans in place for parents that aren't able to do full virtual, not for the fact of capability, but for the fact of opportunity isn't there.
Thank you. So M. Drysdale?
Hi, my name is Melissa Drysdale. I am the parent of an incoming kindergartner. I've also been an elementary educator in a neighboring district for 13 years. I have, I have really loved hearing everybody's thoughts. I'd like to echo what was said in that letter. And I don't want to reiterate everything that's been said over and over again, but I think people have been making some really great points about remote learning. I think that that is the best option. But I have concerns about this idea of hybrid learning. I'm hearing a lot of people say that they think that the littlest ones should be in the classroom because they need the social aspect, right? Which I totally agree with, except that when you look at the, the structure of the school, they're not going to get that. They're going to be so socially isolated from each other. And as a teacher, when I look out at my class, I've got desks that are, you know, three feet apart. This idea that, that kids need face-to-face learning, I can't go to that child and help them over their shoulder. I can't give them a quiet little reminder not to chew on their mask or help them, I can't give them a hug when they fall on the playground. They need those things. And I really want to impress upon everybody that I believe that it is more developmentally appropriate for our littlest ones to be on remote learning because they can see each other's faces on Zoom. They can read each other's facial expressions. And they can actually engage with their teacher in ways that they're not going to be able to in the classroom. So that, that's one point. And my other point that I want to make, there are districts, the district that I work for, we are doing our PD, our professional development for remote learning now. It was put in place for our contract that we're doing 15 hours of professional development this month. And so there are districts that are already on board, giving their staff the tools that they need. There are some people who think that the way that it was rolled out in March is the way it's going to be. But if we give our teachers the tools that they need, we can do this and we can do it well. But we need the time, we need to give our staff the professional development they need. So I really urge us to take our time with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa, I saw Crystal?
I saw Jen and then Crystal.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm a parent of a rising fourth grader at Center Peppin. And I guess I really want, I really appreciate all of the parents and teachers who have showed up today and agree with so much of what folks have said and have learned so much from what folks have said. And I think that, you know, I guess what I really want to emphasize in my short time is that, is that it's really, like, this is a really hard situation. And it's really important to so many of us that, that solutions are creative and that, that the district, that the school committee, that the superintendent is not looking to what is the most expedient, efficient way of meeting the state's requirements, but is looking at how can we best meet the diverse needs of the families and the teachers here? We need to keep our teachers. I don't like it when I hear about potential layoffs if we go all remote. I don't like that because we need as many adults as possible in our children's lives, even if they're not in person, even when they're not in person. And because, and going all remote is not a failure on the part of the district. It is not a failure on the part of our schools or our state. It is, it may be just the reality of, that may be what we need to do to keep our kids and our teachers and our community safe. And then that's a brave, that's a brave thing to say. And it's a brave thing to do is to say, look, we're going to do this hard thing that's going to be so, so hard. And we are going to prioritize the parents, you know, who, who need that, need someone to be working with their children directly during that remote instruction. We need to open up our buildings and be really creative about, maybe they can do their remote learning in a building, in a school building, in the most safe school building. And we can invest in that building. And those of us who don't need that support, then we don't, then we don't need to put our kids there. But all kids can get the same robust remote learning from teachers who are supporting our kids. My kid's best experiences was when he was one-on-one with his teacher. And, and teachers can't be one-on-one that long with students, but even just a little bit really makes a difference. And one-on-one with a box is not the same. And we all know that, and all of our kids deserve that access. And I know it requires some out-of-the-box thinking on our own parts, but we have the energy and the skill and the wisdom and the bravery, I think, to do that in this district. There are so many parents here who are working so hard to really listen to everybody and everybody's needs. We're not going to meet anybody's needs perfectly, but we really care about everybody's needs. And we're looking at each other and what we need and what our teachers need, what our staff need, what our librarians need, what our specials teachers need. Our kids need all those people. We need to keep them. And we need to do, we need to be brave and do things that are not as easy as just giving people a box.
Crystal?
Hi. I am a parent of a rising seventh grader and a rising first grader. My concerns, I guess, are, my first grader is, he's got some special needs, some retention issues. And if he's not in school, remote learning was a bust. We did it, we tried it, we did some one-on-one with some, with his teacher. We did it, we tried it, we did some one-on-one with some, with his teacher and with a para that went okay, when it did. But he, you know, I'm worried about what it's going to look like for him for another, you know, year if he's not in school, having a, a retention issue that is known about but not diagnosed because we haven't been in school to do all of that. But I'm worried about, you know, what, what it's going to look like for him with a whole year of remote. And I will speak, I am a preschool teacher. I went back to work. It's not as scary as it seems. Kids wear masks, I give hugs. I am there for the kids, for their social development. I, it doesn't scare me as that. I mean, I'm used to two-year-olds that they want a hug, they need a hug, I give them a hug. You know, so I, I think that sometimes like their emotional needs, you know, I wouldn't be afraid to walk into anybody's classroom and tend to a child. That's what, that's what we signed up for as teachers is, is helping their growth. And that's, that's a big part. Yeah, they don't play in the same, they don't share the same things, but they still can play closely, you know? Like, it's, it's not as scary as it sounds, I guess, in my experience so far. You know, I've only been back for about a month, so it's, it's not as terrifying, I guess. But I can see how some people would be uncomfortable with it. But my worry is just my little one and his, his retention and what, what is it going to look like as far as OT and speech and all of that for him in the future? Thank you, that's, that's it.
Thank you. I didn't see anybody else.
I'm scrolling.
I'll scroll through. Please raise your hand, signal that you want to talk.
You see, Beth, perhaps is that a hand, I saw a thumbs up. I'm not sure if that was support or public speaker request.
Yes, support, thumbs up.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, I'm looking and Marissa, you're looking. And I think I'll scroll backwards.
I haven't seen anyone.
I don't see anybody either. Okay. Well, you have looked and I have looked and...
Oh, I think I see Samir has a hand.
Ah, there you go.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, it's, I'm, I'm going through my son's email because like the senior said there's better technology. I just wondered, so, since I really appreciate everything people have said and, you know, it's, it's, it's emotional for me too. We have, we have a rainbow family and I have, I grew up in extremely diverse parts of the country and everyone seems very loving here, even if a lot of people have similar outsides or whatever, you know, there's definitely a lot more diversity than, than you would think. But so I, I was just wondering for, I mean, since we, we're still figuring out where we're going, but the kids got, I'm the mom of a high schooler and they, they got their schedule of classes. So is there any structure as to that's going to stay, right? I mean, we're, we're hoping, like, if they were sent out, then Cynthia, I don't know if you speak on this or like, right? They were sent out, so there's some rhetoric of organization, I'm hoping, right, right?
Dr. Leclerc gave you a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, so we'll just stick with that and then, and then, yeah. Because I, I think the senior, I was actually texting my son to get in, which I assume is okay, to listen because they're young adults and this is about their education and everything, right? Their life and, you know, he's, you know, he's like, I don't care. I said, you have to care, you do care and you're a good student. So, good, okay, so, hello, nice to see you. And, and so I, I just wanted to throw in my, my son, I was saying, you know, I care about how you feel and, and you know how you feel, you just have to take that moment with your child and, and, and try to find that space to, you know? And he, and he was saying, amidst of, you know, we all have those same concerns of security and safety and, you know, who's, who's greeting the kids at the school and stuff like that. Obviously, they missed that in-person, you know, thing, but we've had little pods of, you know, playing ball, I mean, when they're teenagers, I can't, I can't just, you know, I can't keep a greyhound in the gate. So I tried to, you know, keep him healthy, but I think the whole world is, is a school anyway and we've traveled, but anyway. So I don't want to know that. So, so far, that's, that's going to stay, right? We don't know about gym, right? So we don't know. And, and it's a 10-day, someone, another parent was telling me that we're pushing back 10 days or we can do that according to DESE, is that right? Like, know what I mean? Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Sorry, I haven't heard, I haven't heard myself talk to adults. I'm the one that needs socialization.
I, I think you might be experiencing, one of the strangeness of public speak is that we aren't really allowed to answer questions during public speak. We can take comments. So I think some of the forums will be more interactive and you'll have a better chance to really get those.
Like my writing group, yeah, you have to ask permission and, okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Cynthia Hand from Diane and then Louise.
Hi, it's Diane Nowetsky. I am going into my 12th year of teaching at Center Pepin as a first-grade teacher. I have 12 years in as a kindergarten and first-grade teacher. And everything that's being said, I can't reiterate enough the importance of it. I feel that we were thrown into a very unexpected situation in March. My staff members and I stepped up to the plate. We worked hard, we did the best we could to give the kiddos what they needed. And I just feel that going in this fall, that we need to really be prepared as teachers and have training in that if we have to go full remote, there is a curriculum that is accessible to all of us, that we are trained in it. I think it's great that we have 10 extra days to be able to be trained in it. And I'm very apprehensive about going back into a classroom with six and seven-year-olds where they're not going to be able to see me smile at them. And from what I understand, I'm not going to be able to touch them. And I'm just, I, I'm, I just believe in public education and I know as parents and as a community and as staff members and administration, we can all work together to make this work to keep everybody safe. Because I have an 82-year-old mom that I won't be able to see if I go back to school in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa? I think we have Louise, you said?
Hello, am I?
You're in.
Yeah, I did just ask Marissa to watch the waiting room. There's somebody who's been emailing everybody trying to get in.
Okay, thank you so much. I've been trying to keep my eye on it while also listening. So I just let someone in, hopefully that was the person.
Hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. We'll give it another few seconds, we'll scroll through one more time. And then I think we're going to close public speak. Marissa, you're back. You don't see anyone.
Oh, can I, can I speak? Yeah. It's Jennifer Gerzma.
Great.
Hi, actually, this is her husband, Matt Gerzma. I just wanted to read something that I sent to our school committee I work for Hampshire Regional. And looking ahead to a new school year, most teachers feel at least some anxiety mixed in with excitement and anticipation. I know I do. Usually I deal with it by keeping busy, prepping curriculum, working on projects around the house, part-time job, staying active, and usually that's enough. But this year is different. This year, what I feel is fear. I'm simply scared to go back into the classroom. Not scared of the additional work the year will necessarily involve, that I can handle. I'm scared of getting this virus. I'm scared of infecting my wife or my daughter or my son or my 72-year-old parents. I'm scared of finding out a few years from now that I have long-term, longer heart damage from a mild case of coronavirus. I'm scared of perhaps watching students I care about getting sick and dying. If I'm being honest, for the first time in my career, I'm also scared of my students, not because what they're doing, that, not because they're doing anything wrong, but because so many of them are still doing exactly what teenagers have always done, hanging out with friends, going to parties, sharing fries or pizza or whatever. In short, being normal teenagers. I've never felt this way about my students before and trust a veteran teacher when I say it's a truly awful feeling. I've educated myself on the statistics and science of COVID-19 as well as I can, given that I'm not an epidemiologist or healthcare profession. I know that in a meta-analysis of studies on related viruses published in a Lancet, social distancing and masks appear to have a large relative effect on transmission. I know that while there's a decent chance I'll get the virus if we come back to in-person learning, I'll most likely not get a serious case. Even if I do get a serious case, I probably won't die and that there's no conclusive evidence that will lead to any, that it will lead to any long-term complications. I know the same is probably true for my family, for my students and their families and for my colleagues. I know that Massachusetts infection and transmission metrics are good right now, although this is primarily relative to the rest of the United States and not to countries like Germany, Finland, Japan, South Korea, et cetera. None of this makes me any less scared because most likely and probably won't, no conclusive evidence, just don't cut it for me right now. Know that I appreciate the vast amount of work administration in the school committee has already done, as well as the support you've shown us as teachers. I don't envy you the position you're in. No matter what decisions you make, you will leave many in the community unhappy. But as public schools across the state reopen and thousands of college students flood back into the area and families come back from vacations across the country and all those end-of-summer parties happen all at once, please consider the vast set of unknowns that will come together in September. Please consider staying all or mostly all online, at least until we have more information on what will happen, as opposed to speculation about what might happen. As Sarah Barber Jones, a veteran Amherst teacher, wrote in a recent Gazette opinion piece, "Getting it Right Means Thinking About Whether We Are, We Are Okay With Even One Person Getting Sick and Dying Because We Returned School Prematurely." Are students or their family members, our own children, our parents, spouses, partners or friends, ourselves? Please, let's stop forging ahead with an overly optimistic plan for education as usual as new cases and deaths surge across the country. Let's get this right and focus on the only thing that really matters, saving lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Oh, I'm seeing Luca.
Hi, my name is Luca. I'm nine years old. I am moving into fourth grade at Maple Elementary. And I just wanted to say, I know that it's probably really hard for the school to be able to let everybody be in a classroom, but still meet the requirements of COVID. And I just wanted to say that I really hope me and my friends can at least partly be in school.
Thank you. Thank you, Luca.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? One last, is your, raise your hand if you want to talk because we're going to go through. I see Pilar.
Yes, great. Hi there. I'm Pilar Goldstein Daye and I'm the parent of a rising eighth grader at Whitebrook Middle School. And I want to thank everyone, first of all, for their hard work and commitment that you've given to this challenge. I've had the privilege of tending the Facebook page for the East Hampton Special Ed Parent Advisory Council since 2013. And in that volunteer role, I've been listening to the many voices and needs of the special ed population in general. Some have struggled, some have thrived, and some have sat firmly in the middle of the remote learning experience of the spring, like my own child. And what strikes me though is that the likelihood of a return to a shutdown remains high and rendering all of our needs and opinions moot as well. The pandemic is not the only type of unexpected disruption. Therefore, I urge the administration to take the opportunity that we have right now to create a solid, creative, East Hampton-centered, remote learning plan that addresses the needs of our very diverse community. And from that solid base, a hybrid and in-person models will be a bit easier to render. Thank you.
Anybody else? Marissa and I are going to be dizzy as we go through these six pages. Okay. But we're so happy that everybody's here.
And how exciting to hear from a couple of students from our different buildings.
Okay, so we are looking, our, our last time, if you would like to speak, please make sure that we know about it now so that we do not miss you. All right, I'm going through the last time and I don't see anyone yet. All right. Going, going. Marissa, did you see anybody? Okay. Thank you for your comments and your great thoughts and your participation. I am going to close public speak now and we're going to go on with all of the mighty things that we have to get done tonight. I am going to say that at some point, and it can be now or it could be in a little while, we should take a five-minute break because we have a lot to do and I think people have to just get up for two seconds. But if we're ready now, we could do subcommittee updates, which is the policy subcommittee. We ready for that? We have to unmute.
I, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Okay. So in light of everything that's been going on, we met on the 15th and proposed a few new policies regarding remote learning. It happens to be that the remote learning is the last one that we're going to talk about, but that was what prompted all of these changes or additions to our policy manual. Cindy, I'm not sure how you want me to go through this since there's six of them. Can, can we just go through each one and then roll call at the end?
I'm sorry, but we have to do a roll call vote each and every time.
Okay, and you'll do that after I announce the...
You announce it, I'll ask for the roll call.
Okay. So I'm proposing the first reading of EBCD, which is an emergency closing policy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Erin?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Mere LaChapelle?
Mere LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzensky, aye.
Okay, the next on the list is, I would like to propose that we delete the East Hampton Public School IGA policy, which is basic instructional program.
I second that. I second that. Thank you.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Dan Dunham, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Eric?
Erin Goldstein, aye.
And Mere. Mere LaChapelle, aye. Cynthia Kuzensky, aye.
Okay, the third one up is adding the MASD version of IGA, which is Curriculum Development.
Second.
Okay, Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Erin Goldstein, aye.
Mere LaChapelle, aye. Cynthia Kuzensky, aye.
Okay, the next one, Sue, can, I can't see, I don't even know where you are, Sue Colby. IGB, I had made two changes to that policy, adding where it has an asterisk and... Um, adding where it has an asterisk and bold italics. Um, we're adding the Special Ed Director. I had sent you an email and the one that we got in our package today, um, or last week, was the original. So I just want to make sure when we're talking about adding the MASC IGB Support Service Program, that we change the bold italics to Special Education Coordinator.
Sue?
Sorry, I had unmuted. Do you want it as Special Education Coordinator?
Yes, and then there's a, um, asterisk below at the bottom that says that we will denote, like, who it is. That can be removed. Okay, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzynski, aye.
Okay, the next one is adding MASC version of IHBEA, English Learner Education.
I second that, I'm sorry.
Okay, Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzynski, aye.
One more.
Okay, and the purpose of this whole thing is, um, remote learning, which is MASC version IHBHE for the first reading.
I second that.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan, we didn't hear you.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Thank you.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzynski, aye.
Excellent. All right, now we're on to the really big stuff. Uh, so it is time for the superintendent update. Um, do we want to go through that? Or do we want to take a quick five-minute break? Uh, before we go through the meet, of the meeting, Shannon's saying yes. Okay, um, so does someone want to make a motion at a second? And we'll roll call for a five-minute break.
I'd like to make a motion to take a five-minute break.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Oh, you're muted, Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzynski, aye. Okay, I have seven thirty-four, so we will take a five-minute break. I will stop recording and we will be back at seven thirty-nine. It looks to me, uh, as though, um, we have all the school committee members back and the mayor and Dr. Leclair. So can we roll call back in?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laura Garcia, aye.
Mayor Goldstein, aye.
Mayor, you're muted.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzynski, aye. Okay, great. So, um, welcome back. And, um, Superintendent Leclair, it is time for your update.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna give a brief, uh, statement about the SRO because I know we're doing a presentation in a few weeks. Um, on the School Resource Officer topic, um, I wanted to say that this past January, our school district was asked if we wanted to partner with the police department to write a grant to secure funds for a school resource officer. Um, our grant writer reviewed the grant and met with members of the police department to develop an application. And that application was submitted by the police department on March eleventh. And then, um, March thirteenth, kind of the world came to a halt with COVID-19. Um, and we never thought about it again. Uh, in early June, I was alerted that the police department was awarded the grant. Um, and we didn't do, I didn't do anything with that information at that point in time because it wasn't, uh, a grant that was awarded to the school department. I did speak to the chief, um, in the last few weeks, but, uh, with so much going on around the school reopening, it really has been on the back burner. So I'm happy to discuss the grant, although it is not a school grant and we do not receive the funds. And I'm happy to discuss an SRO program in general in light of, um, the racial issues that have continued to plague our country. Um, I will happily make a present, presentation, uh, to the school committee, um, in a few weeks. And this week, I will, uh, just note that our Equity Committee will begin a discussion to unpack some of the next steps around the SRO and racial challenges. So more to come on that. And so now I'm wondering if...
Marissa, Marissa has raised her hand, but, um, if you remember, we were going to, I, uh, I want you to ask your question if you need to, but this was really for information purposes only and we are absolutely going to put this on the August eleventh agenda. So, Marissa?
I, I understand that and I promise I won't derail this, just thirty seconds. I just think it's really important that the people who are on and watching, who are concerned about this issue, understand that, um, the school committee had no knowledge of this grant application. Um, we learned it from some people in the community. And so I just want to put that out there that we were, I'll speak only for myself. I was really stunned to learn that this, this was happening without any, um, discussion or notification from the school committee. So I will very much look forward to having an extended conversation that involves the public and that we can really dig into this issue, um, in our upcoming meeting. I'll stop there, I promise.
So, okay, Dr. Leclair?
Cindy or Marissa, can one of you share, uh, give me sharing abilities so that I can, um, share the screen?
Marissa's good at that.
Okay.
I'm, I think I'm good at that, hold on. Uh, all right, hold on, let me see if I do it.
Down on the bottom?
Yes, I'm just trying to make sure I don't share my screen. Um, hold on. Um, this is embarrassing.
If you hover around the shared screen icon, there should be a little, like, arrow to the right side of it. And then it should say you can share it with multiple people. Do you see that?
I got it.
You got it, you found it, thank you.
Yay!
Okay.
I think I did it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, from the beginning. There we go. Okay, so thank you, everyone. I just wanted to, um, take a few minutes to talk a little bit about the plan. Um, let me give you a little bit of background. So within the last four weeks, we have been building an education system that has taken hundreds of years for this country to build. And we're trying to build three versions of it in four weeks. So, um, we've been a little, um, buried, um, at the school department. And so this is what I will say. The, the initial guidance, and I've said this in the forums, indicated a three-foot separation. And we did a feasibility of our buildings initially with the three-foot separation between desks. And then really came to the realization through discussions with, um, administration, with school committee members, with some teachers, that they were just not going to feel safe with that option. So we took that option off the table and we looked at a six-foot option. And we were looking at the six-foot option in relation to one of the three plans that we were asked to build for the Department of Ed is an in-person plan, a fully in-person plan. Um, and this is what I will say about the in-person plan. One of the three we need to build and submit. My, um, my written comments to the Department of Education will be that we cannot conduct an in-person, fully in-person plan in East Hampton given the six-foot separation. We cannot have all students in the building. And we were unwilling to go to the three-foot option. So really for us, that's kind of in a nutshell what happens with the three-foot plan. That's really as much effort as we've put into building a fully in-person plan at this point in time. So tonight, for the sake of this discussion, we're focusing on the hybrid options and the remote options. So, um, I just wanted to make that case to everyone initially. We have a few different options that we're going to put out there, um, based on our understandings of what best practice is, based on feedback that we've heard from various stakeholders. Um, and so I'm gonna try and prevent, present a few different options tonight. Um, so some of our basic understandings, and I'm trying to do this while I'm still seeing some people, so let me move people around here. Our goal is always going to be to welcome as many students and faculty back into school safely, um, when it's appropriate. You know, our ideal is that we want in-person school at some point in time. Maybe this year, maybe next year. But we know that there is no substitute for in-person learning. It is the gold standard and that's what we want to get back to. For those of you that have struggled with remote learning, you know that face-to-face with your, with your child's teacher in the classroom, in the school building, is the ideal that we aspire to when it is safe for us to do that. Um, returning to the school buildings is not safe for some of our students and our staff, so we have to have options. And I think that's been expressed by some people this evening. Uh, flexibility and adaptability are the keys to our success. So I want to point out, I heard some discussion tonight, um, around, well, you know, I'm going to do remote this year. Um, I want to be careful and explain to people that yes, there will be, uh, an all-remote option for people. But whatever model we choose to go with at the beginning of the school year may not be where we end up. This virus is fluid and we will be fluid as well. So if we start with hybrid, we may go to remote. Or if we start with remote, maybe we'll go to hybrid if things change. So where we start may not be where we end. So I think we need to be flexible. Um, equity is one of our core values. And school districts were asked to develop three models to submit to the Department of Ed. And, uh, so I'm gonna talk about the hybrid and the remote version tonight. Plans needed to be submitted to school committees by July thirty-first. And then the school committee must select a plan by August tenth. So right now, this will go into the hands of the school committee. And they will be, uh, making the ultimate, uh, final decision about where the school district starts. So our planning, this is a work in progress. Please have patience as we refine and adjust according to the latest guidance. While we are going to comply by submitting information on our three plans, we really have thought deeply about our facilities and we've listened to family and staff concerns. We are moving from the six-foot, uh, from the three-foot to the six-foot protocol. Um, and we are going to, um, have frequent ma, mass breaks hourly and physical distancing and hand washing, sanitizing are all included in our hybrid, uh, models that we're going to be presenting to you tonight. So let me jump in with the hybrid models. So, um, obviously, we would only go into a hybrid model if the infection rates are low. Right now, we are at, um, point eight in East Hampton. That's based on the, um, state metrics, which is relatively low. However, I know, uh, people are talking about, um, those rates may be changing because of the summertime, because of students coming back to colleges in the fall. So we're keeping a close eye on that and we're looking at, um, the surrounding towns as well. Uh, the hybrid model provides in-person instruction as well as remote learning. We're looking at a Cohort A, Cohort B system for, um, most of our remote models, but we'll have one out-of-the-box model that we're gonna share with you. Students will be designated to group via last names. All students will be assigned, uh, an East Hampton Public School teacher. Um, all students will learn from that EPS teacher five days per week, sometimes in the classroom, sometimes over Zoom. And high-needs students who are in small specialized special education programs and those who are homeless or in foster care will be invited to attend school all four days that were actually in the building. Um, so let me show you what the model looks like. So Cohort A could conceivably go to school Monday and Tuesday in-person. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be remote. And Cohort B would do remote, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Thursday, Friday would be in-person. There's a couple of versions of this that we have talked about. One version would put students in the building for an extended half-day when they're in-person. And that means that they would, um, be in class until about lunchtime and then they would get their bagged meal and they would go home and they would have a remote class or two classes, um, in the afternoon at home. There's also a full-day version, which has lunch actually on-site because we know that that's a childcare consideration for some people. We're gonna get into some schedules. So the first one is a sample hybrid preschool schedule. Cohort A would be in-person two days and then remote three days. And the Wednesday day in, in the middle would not be an instruction day for the preschoolers. Um, there might be a little bit of instruction assignments, but it's primarily for the teachers to hold IEP meetings, for checking in with families, um, that sort of thing. And I'll pa, I'll pause in a minute. Um, preschool in-person days. Here is a schedule for what an in-person day face-to-face looks like. And then, um, some options for what a remote learning day would look like in the preschool world. I'll show you the elementary one and then we can pause for a second. Here's a sample elementary hybrid co-teaching model. It's difficult to see, so I'm wondering if it would be okay with Marissa if we could have, um, Julianne or Jill or Judy kind of give us an overview of what this schedule, um, kind of encapsulates, if you will, for those people at home that may not have a large device where they can actually see it.
That's certainly fine with me, I can unmute people as...
Yep.
Yeah. Find them. Can you name again who you'd like?
Uh, Julianne.
Yep, I'm right here. Oh, great, so excellent. Yes. Um, so basically, it's four blocks and this is very similar to the way that we've structured it, uh, um, the middle school and the high school. Both of them sort of work on a four-block, um, per-day, um, schedule. And those four blocks in the elementary schedule for the in-person days are for, um, ELA, math, and social studies. Um, and then on the, the Wednesday remote day, every, everyone is remote. Um, so that's our day for our tiered interventions and also our small-group reading instruction, um, which will all happen remotely. And then for Cohort A that had the in-person days on Monday and Tuesday for those four blocks around, um, two, two blocks of ELA, one block of math and one block of social studies, then we'll be with a second teacher, a buddy teacher on Thursday and Friday, but remotely. Um, and they'll be doing adaptive practice in both math and literacy and also, um, some project-based science. Um, and again, that, that will all be remote with a second teacher because the in-person teacher for Monday and Tuesday will now be teaching Cohort B, which is the in-person students for Thursday and Friday.
So I think that, um, if you look at this schedule, a couple of things that I would point out, it's, the schedule is more, um, concrete on, for remote days. There is, um, more... There is um more of a a set schedule that all the classrooms will have um and set expectations. And um I would point out that this schedule was designed with um our literacy coach, our literacy person who had feedback into this, and the focus is on the core academics, really putting a spotlight on doing those core academics in-person if we can. Um and um that's something that they felt strongly about, they meaning the administration and Jody, our literacy coach.
Can I can I ask a question, please?
Yes, Mary.
Um so just to take one step back from getting into this level, I'm just curious to get thoughts maybe about the previous slide.
Yep, let me go back one.
One more, sorry.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Uh one more. There we go. So.
The preschool one, you want you want that one, or do you want the elementary one?
Elementary one is fine. Yeah, that's fine. So um because I understand that obviously we have concerns with teachers, um their own health issues, their own family issues, things like that. Um I guess one of the things that I would like to get a sense of on this model is um is it seen as cohort B or A that's changing from in-person to remote? Would the remote be the same teacher? Or be would the or would they have with the is the plan currently that cohort A would have one teacher that would be there for in-person and remote? Or would they have one only be the one doing the in-person versus the remote? If you could just clarify that one point as we start to go forward with this.
Julianne, you want to take that?
Yep. Um in this, in the elementary schedule, so um it's different at the three different levels. We have an elementary schedule, a middle school schedule, and a high school schedule. I know Dr. Leclerc is going through those right now, but for elementary, we're really working on a buddy system um with our teachers for for lots of reasons. Um and so in that case, the um classroom teacher would see the would see all in in um person students for cohorts A and B, and all students on Wednesday with the other teacher. Um and then the other teacher would see, um so on the elementary schedule, I think we we labeled them teacher A and teacher B, or teacher one and teacher two. Um that teacher would be the teacher that engages with those students on either the Monday, Tuesday for cohort B, or the Thursday, Friday for cohort A. But all of those teachers are um cr- you know, will be EPS teachers. Um they they will work collaboratively together. Um so it's it's um you're getting two teachers in that model, um but they're working together to towards the same goals.
Can I ask um a clarifying question? Is that in order to enable a teacher who cannot go to the building to be able to be fully remote? Um because otherwise, it seems like to have a single teacher who is exposed in person to both cohorts is simply more exposure. Um so can I ask about the thinking behind having one teacher who sees both cohorts in person?
Um so the cohort, this is still one class we're talking about, so so twenty students, and we have, and the cohort is bit split into approximately ten students in in each cohort. So that the in-person teacher, as as Allison was saying, um that's doing the very specific foundational skill work in person um is i- is the person who will see the ten students on Monday, Tuesday, and the ten students Thursday, Friday. Um we've definitely talked about teachers who potentially um couldn't come into school um doing remote teaching from their homes, but I think that that's um something that Allison um and the negotiations team um has to work out. But I would say that the real the real push for through this quality system with the teachers, because um teachers felt at the elementary um level very strongly that holding in-person class and having students at home livestream into that in-person class over Zoom um didn't present a classroom management um option that that was feasible for for learning.
Does that help?
Yeah, do you want me to say anything else?
No, I, Dr. Leclerc, are you ready to continue?
Yep. So Wednesday, I would highlight again, is a fully remote day in the hybrid model for everyone. No one is in the building. Even our specialized students, because we feel it's a day for deep cleaning. Okay, so it's a day that um just the custodial staff and the administration would be in the building. Everyone else would be remote. Okay, so here's a peek at Whitebrook's schedule. Again, we have two options that we have been looking at. One would be a reduced day. And one would be a full day, but still the same format, two days in-person, three days remote. Julianne, I don't know if you want to highlight anything that's different about this, or?
Sure, I would say the real difference here is exactly what I was just saying, which is that in this model for middle school and high school, um that the teachers who are putting together these sample schedules actually preferred having um students who are home doing the in the remote cohort um live streaming into the classes. So that's a real difference here. We don't have that um that two-teacher buddy system um because we're not um we're not have uh sorry, because we don't have to have a separate um learning experience for those remote students, because they're live streaming right into the classrooms. Um we know that it will still present um a a challenge in terms of classroom management. Um so at the at the top of the schedule there, you'll see it says additional staff needed to support at-home cohort livestreaming into class. Um but we do believe that that's more doable at the middle and high school level than it is necessarily at the elementary level. Um but we have, we have all of those options open to us um moving forward.
So a couple of things that I would point out on this schedule is the frequency of the mask breaks. Um they're they're hourly. Um and I think the other piece that we'd like to kind of highlight is that I believe, I don't think we have another half-day reduced-day slide, Julianne, for Whitebrook. Let me see.
Yep, you do.
Oh, there's the full-day one. Yep.
So that first one was reduced day, and this one's full day.
Yep. So again, the movement breaks, the lunch, um it would be in-person in this one. And um so a couple of things that I would say in both of the models that we've presented to you. We're focused on if the hybrid is what anyone wants to entertain at some point during the year, we may be in a hybrid. Our focus would be to limit the movement of students as much, particularly at these grade levels, and move the teachers. So teachers would be moving from class if they needed to, um and students would be in place. So that's a full day and a reduced-day schedule for Whitebrook. Anybody on the school committee have a wondering or a question about that?
Can you talk about um the advantage of a reduced day? Um why why not just have the full day?
Yeah. Um the reduced day, we came to um as an option about a week and a half ago after s- having some feedback from teachers that um expressed concern um about being responsible for students eating lunch in their classrooms, thinking that the students would have to remove their mask to eat lunch, and teachers felt vulnerable over that. So we said, well, why don't we provide an option where the lunch can go home with children, and then they could do a remote lesson in the afternoon from home. Probably not ideal for working families as an option. But again, trying to offer some choice.
Right. I mean, looking and thinking back at uh at the elementary school schedule, um I imagine there are working parents out there who are seeing this schedule where their second grader has to be checking into class at from home at nine AM and and I know, I imagine there's a lot of parents panicking about how they're gonna facilitate that if they can't be home with their kid. Uh what are what are you all thinking about that, the scenario?
So I think that that you you point out, Marissa, a major difference between the spring closing and this fall. Um in order to move into a remote model this fall, there are things that we are expected to incorporate into the model that were not there in the spring. Uh for example, we have to take attendance in the remote model. Um we had much more flexibility with that in the spring. Um we have to um monitor engagement and participation, and we do have to give grades. So in order to give grades, they have to get the same grade, whether they would be remote or um in-person. You know, the same, they have to be uh they have to be given the same assignment, so we need to have the instruction mirror what would happen in a face-to-face model as much as possible. And and I'll let Julianne add anything to that if I missed anything.
No, I think that that's, I mean, i- it's true that it's gonna look a lot different than it did in the spring, and I don't know if that's necessarily going um to be better for for working families, but one thing that we did here in the um in the survey that we did of families was that having some more predictable structures around when to expect classes to occur, what classes were going to occur, um and 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 those those really concrete um things to rely on was actually helpful um to to the working day, if you're a working-at-home parent, or um if you're a a parent that um is working outside of the house and you have someone looking after your um your child, then having that sort of structured time and predictable time might actually be easier. Um that's not a perfect answer, and I'm sorry, I don't have a better one.
So I have a I I have a question about this. If if you were to dismiss at twelve and there were families that could not receive their children, is it possible to have a plan where those kids could stay and do their remote work within the building? For those that absolutely needed it beyond IEPs of 504s?
Anything's possible.
Yeah.
Does that does that sound like?
Sure.
You know, I mean, we're in the midst of con- we're in the midst of negotiating with teachers, and so, you know, there's some there's some challenges that we need to overcome.
Okay. We wouldn't want to present a situation that was inequitable, I think, um for families or for teachers, so that's really a big part of our struggle.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. So the high school, same hybrid model, two days in, three days remote. Wednesdays would be a day fully remote for all. The high school has the added challenge of CTEC, which is adding an additional complication. But they're looking at basically, I know this is small font, four um remote blocks or four classes. There was a parent that that just mentioned a little while ago, my child received their schedule. So that child's four classes would be held, um and they would report to those four classes. Um and um they would also do those four classes remotely. So um and then we have oh, I wanted to show you what a high school classroom looks like at six-feet separation. This is our high school.
Allison, do you think you could go back just very quickly to um uh to the high school schedule for one second?
Yes, I can. You just go back.
So.
And I can hold on the call if you have a question.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. So you're gonna have four classes, and then um are the kids dismissed? The kids are dismissed at twelve fifteen?
In a reduced day, yes.
Okay.
Or we have the full-day option.
Okay, so there will still be that. So there's the full-day option at the high school on the half-day. Okay. And in the afternoon, uh if it is a reduced day, the kids would then uh be back on from quarter of one till two o'clock. Is that correct? Doing some remote special or elective or whatever. Okay. All right, I just tried to understand that as we go through. Thank you.
Can I wait, but I'm sorry, just looking at timing. Um if students are catching a bus home, how are they getting home in a half-hour and getting back on to remote learning?
That that last block from twelve forty-five to two, I don't know if if Bill or Sue want to talk to this, um speak to this. Um so that's again, I so I I I've been talking about the intervent- tiered intervention time. Um and I know that that's um that's some very technical language, but that's really what that that time is for. So typically, we have some kind of time during the day with students where we can um give them learning interventions or give them services consistent with their IEPs. Um but with this tight four-block schedule to keep students um on their on their graduation track classes, doesn't allow a lot of time for that, and so that's what is pushed into that twelve forty-five to two PM. So it's not a, it's not scheduled classes that are meeting during that time. It's small groups um to meet with the teachers, it's services um that students receive. It might be professional development or staff meetings. So it's it's all, it it is certainly um work time for everyone, but it's not going to be a scheduled class meeting at twelve forty-five. Oh, I I don't think I'm allowed to call on people, but it looks like Shannon has her hand up.
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry, Bill. Just give me one second. I'm still confused about middle school.
Do you want me to go back to that screen, Shannon?
Go back to it, because I I remember what it said, but that was a daily schedule, and we're still looking at Wednesday remote everybody, right?
Correct.
All three levels.
All three levels.
Doesn't matter.
In this hybrid model, yes.
Okay, so and also, you're talking about cohort one and two at the middle school. Is it every other week?
No.
Or is it?
It's Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday.
In class.
Correct. In school.
Okay.
Shannon and Allison may have been speaking at the same time. Shannon, cohort one goes Monday, Tuesday, and cohort two comes to school on Thursday, Friday.
Is that here?
All all throughout the district.
Oh, wow. Okay, thanks.
Do you want me to go back? Let me go back. So you see in this model, this is the same for all three levels.
I thought we were talking like each individual level as we were going. Sorry.
Yeah, it's it's really four levels.
We showed you sample, we showed you sample schedules because I um because we heard people wanted to see like actual concrete stamp, you know, samples of what this schedule would look like, so that's why we wanted to show you sample schedules.
All right.
Okay, so I can land here. I can stop here for a few minutes.
No, go ahead. I'm good.
Okay.
Did everybody else get it? Am I the only one who didn't? Probably. Okay, all right.
Shannon, schedules are always difficult to understand, especially when schools are in session and you change schedules. I mean, so I can understand if you're not used to looking at this. It's very perplexing, so don't worry about asking questions.
No, no, do you ask us questions. You've got all the administrators here. They've thought about this a lot. Um they've worked on, you know, different versions of this. The initial discussion or the initial guidance from the Department of Ed asked for kids to be one week in school, one week at home um for a hybrid model. That was the example the Department of Ed used. Nobody in East Hampton liked that model that I encountered, because um all the administrators who, you know, checked in with some of their faculty that they could reach this summer, really, you know, that if we're going to have kids in person, they would like to see them every week. They'd like to have their eyeballs on them every week and engage with them every week, so that, you know, a whole week doesn't go by and you've like not seen or heard. a whole week doesn't go by and you've like not seen or heard from a kid. You know, so they really are trying to condense this. And I will tell you that this is a version that most districts have moved towards for their hybrid model. Their schedules might look a little bit different, but I think that most of the area schools are looking at some quasi-version of this for their hybrid model.
See, what I got confused with was you have cohort A and B on here. And then when you got to the middle school, it was one and two. I was all confused. Sorry.
Same thing, same thing. I'm sorry, we should correct that.
Yes, please.
That's a good point. Yep. All right, so let me move to this is the for when kids are at home. And Bill, I don't know if you want to just say something about this because you've made some good points about this in the past.
I hope I can remember what they are.
Well, I think from the perspective of if there are parents on this call that understand that the high school usually operates in an 84-minute block, we would not be looking for students to Zoom in from home for an 84-minute block. So do you want to just touch on that?
Yeah, sure. Anybody who's been on this call since 6:00 can agree that it's hardly not a good idea to have kids on Zoom for 84 minutes, four times a day. Not that it hasn't been fascinating, and I don't want to disparage that at all. It's been, it's been very interesting, and I'm really appreciative of people's concerns. Students at home, our focus really is to make sure that, I think Alice spoke, Alice Wannamaker spoke to this earlier, make sure that there's a level of accountability for students to check in with all of their classes when they are at home in the hybrid model. Not only that, but we also want it to be a very predictable time so that parents can really support high school students in scheduling themselves. One of the things that we heard from the spring, which, you know, I think the assessments of remote learning in the spring were pretty accurate, that it was, it was, I described it as terrible and the best we could do. And one of the problems was parents were not able to know when kids needed to be in class or not. Parents did not know what the accountability in the classes was. So what I'd like to do is ensure that parents can say, I know that you need to be in class at 8:30, 9:30, 10:30, and 11:30. And I'm not sure that each one of them will have to be in class for exactly one half hour. I think that will vary based on the subject matter and the lesson being taught. My example that I like to use, if a PE class is going outside, I don't expect the students that are remote to stay on the computer while the class is going outside and the computer, you know, and the teacher carries his laptop outside to, that doesn't make any sense to me. But I want the students to check in at the beginning of class and check in at the end of class. And again, the timeframe, if you, the schedule that we have, each of those, each of those classes is about 45 minutes before we have a mass break. So for a portion of that 45, I want the students at home to have a live check-in with their teachers. How long varies on the, on the, on the, on the class and the subject matter. Anything else there, Allison, you wanted me to touch on?
No, I think that's, I think that's great. I would just, I think I would point out that when the students are in school, they would be in those blocks longer. And they also have face, they would also have the mass breaks in between. So that's why, you know, this looks, there's like a 30-minute break in between each one.
Any other questions for me?
All right. Here's a hybrid full-day schedule at the high school.
And Allison, if I could talk about this for a moment?
Please.
So if we're in school for a full day, again, it's 84-minute blocks. We have reduced the blocks to 75 minutes to allow for 15-minute mass breaks in between the classes. And I don't need to go through the nuts and bolts of each part of the schedule, but I know that 75 minutes might be a long time for any group. And having a mass break all at the same time, if it's a longer class, part of what's been suggested, and I think we can consider, is that the mass breaks get spread out throughout the period. So for instance, classes on the first floor can take their mass break a half hour into the class, while classes on the second floor take their mass break an hour into class. And then, and then at the end of the class, students on the third floor. And I haven't quite worked out exactly the timing, but that's another option here that that's not built in. But I think that we would consider spreading out the mass breaks throughout that 75-minute block. That was all I wanted to add there.
I'm not sure if this is the time to ask. So stop me if it's part of your presentation. We talked before about if we, we have to approve a hybrid model tonight. And that doesn't mean we're going to do the hybrid model, but we have to approve one to send it, correct?
Well, I'd at least like you to narrow it down a little bit for me because there is another model I'm going to show you.
Right. So if we approve a hybrid model, I believe that the idea was tossed out that those who still did not feel comfortable or needed to stay home could participate in a remote model every day. My question is this. If we have all this wonderful remote learning set up already for the hybrid model, isn't it possible for those kids who stay home to actually just be a part of that remote picture without, and and so they would still have that contact with teachers and with classmates?
I will, I will show that on a future slide.
All right, then I'll be quiet.
No, that's fine. So I want to just kind of, I want to pause for a second because I want to see if Julianne, if I can put her on the spot again because I was listening to some of the parents tonight, and they're concerned about some of the tools we'll be using for instruction. And I want to just pause for a second and let Julianne. In one of these schedules, we have the names of some of the.
Yeah, the elementary.
Yeah, the elementary. So I thought, I just wanted Julianne to kind of highlight them because we went by them fast.
Sure.
To answer, to maybe address some parents' concerns.
Absolutely. So one of the things I'm really excited about actually is our social studies and science curricula. So both are inquiry-based curricula, and those will both lend themselves really nicely to transitioning to both in-person but then remote to activities that that families can do at home together. So that's really one thing I want to say. I'm also just going to put a plug out there really quickly that histories, mysteries is a new curriculum that we are using for social studies. And that was actually developed in part by Kelly Brown, who's one of our history teachers at the high school. And it's an all-online curriculum, inquiry-based history. It's really exciting. We have a lot of teachers who are, who are super excited about it. In terms of our online programs that are new, what we've really decided that we wanted to invest in was some adaptive practice programs. So Freckle, both Freckle Math and Freckle ELA are tied to our benchmark assessment tool, which is the Renaissance STAR assessment for elementary school. And so that's really nice for our teachers because it takes some of the guesswork out of attaching some of our assessment data to the next step that a student should be taking in their, in their learning. Zern is another tool that we're recent, that we've recently acquired. It's also a math tool. And Zern is great because it actually comes with little mini lessons that are taught by real teachers online. So the teacher, the in-person teacher is going to teach a math lesson. And then on the remote days, the student can actually re-access that lesson to do their own practice work. So that's another one that we've used. The Center for the Collaborative Classroom, which is our literacy suite, has actually already released a ton of information for going remote in the fall using that literacy curriculum. So we have remote guidance for every program in our literacy suite in addition to an online learning portal for that literacy suite. So we're really, we're very, we're very focused on making sure that students are getting the foundational skills on those in-person days. The foundational skills, especially language skills, are what came up from the Department of Education last year in terms of our prerequisite content standards. So that's what we really want to focus our in-person instruction on. So I just, I, I want to respond really quickly to what Cindy was just asking about why students who are remote can't just take advantage of the remote learning the whole time. And just one thing I want to say to that is at the elementary level, there are skills, especially around teaching reading, that are really, it's a real challenge to do over Zoom. And a lot of that is because of the delay between how your mouth is moving when you're reading and what people can hear. So I, I do, I do appreciate that that might be an option and a choice that we may have to take for some students if we're able to. But I also just want to honor that the elementary literacy teachers felt like if if there's any shred of hope, we can be in-person to teach some of these skills, that would be our preference. But yes, we have a lot of really great online programs to help us in the event that we can't do that.
And, you know, and the other thing I would want to say is some of the feedback that were received was that, you know, teachers were using so many different things. And if you had multiple children in your family, it was kind of all over the place. So we took that feedback and seriously thought about kind of bringing it down to the tools that we really felt that we wanted to push forward and use, which still gives teachers flexibility, but it will bring some level of sameness at the elementary level and at the middle level.
And it's also important, I think, Allison, to point out that we'll have a, we'll have a common place on our website for all parents to go, regardless of what level their students are at, to find those resources. So that's a, that's something that we're working on as well.
Which was something we were missing.
It was a little bit more scattered in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And people that, you know, had a child at the middle school, didn't know if they were, are they supposed to be in a Zoom meeting now or a team meeting? Or, you know, it, it was hard to follow if you had multiple children in the district. So we're trying to put all that in a big silo so that people can find it more easily. Go ahead, Laurie.
Are, are you considering moving everyone to a Google platform? And every teacher using Google Classroom with due dates that are very visible to students and to parents? And it goes on to the class, it goes on to the calendar? I really believe that the Google platform would streamline and make it easier for both the students and the teachers, as well as the parents.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Laurie. I love Google. This is what I will say. There is a tech committee that is made up primarily of teachers that is reviewing all this information. It's facilitated by Ashley Barstow, our IT director. And they have been kind of culling through everything, and they are going to be making a recommendation to me. So I'm, I'm kind of letting that group have a lot of input into that decision rather than have it be top-down.
I, Laurie and I just heard so many parents, if you have kids at different levels, like elementary and middle school, and to have to learn a number of different programs was really difficult. So if you used Google Classroom, at least through, you know, elementary and middle school or something like that, parents would have one to learn instead of perhaps three. Maybe they'll have two, but it will cut down on the, oh, my God, am I Google Classroom? Am I this, am I that? Let's see, elementary is what, you know? Who's on first?
We, we received that feedback as well. So we're, we're really trying to be very thoughtful about how we can do better in the fall. I think that's really an obstacle that we need to overcome.
I think Bill wanted to say something about this.
Yeah, I did want to just point out that at the high school level, for years, we have made use of the Moodle platform. And there are teachers who have a lot of resources already stored in Moodle, and students have been using Moodle quite a bit. So we're very much in favor of Google Classroom as a, as a platform. But I think in the high school, we have been talking. And again, we'll, we'll wait for the recommendations from the tech committee. But having Moodle available as well, and I don't think that that's particularly daunting for our students. They've been using it a lot. And, and again, some teachers have years and years worth of, of material up on Moodle.
I was supposed to. I can understand that because I've worked with Moodle in different districts. But once you make the switch over to Google and the students agree as well, and I know that the transition, when you have all of your materials in one place, it's very hard. But once it is there, it's seamless. And I think that if we're going to start our younger children on a Google platform, and then if the teachers are then going to say, oh, now you're going to learn Moodle, it's going to be detrimental. I believe it's the time to move everyone over. And as I said, it can be hard at first, but then it's going to make everyone's lives easier. And also Zoom now corresponds to Google very well. Before, we were told we had to use Google Meet. But now, when you're setting up right in the Google Calendar, you can actually have the addition of adding a Zoom feature to your Meet instead of Google. And then that goes to the calendar. And everything is in one place. It's an extension.
Yeah.
I agree. Something to think about.
I am not, I would not be surprised if the tech committee came to me with two recommendations because they did ask for clarification. And I told them I would be okay with a K8 and a 912 model. I don't want to be all over the place. But for right now, I would be okay if they presented two models to me. But I didn't want to go more than that. All right. So this is another hybrid model. So we're still in the hybrid world, okay? This is a little out-of-the-box thinking, but you may have seen it in some other districts. We, another, another option would be to do, to prioritize the younger children, to bring them into the buildings four days a week with one day remote for cleaning, and to have all the older children learning remote full-time. So it would be prioritizing the younger children. We would be utilizing all the buildings in the district if we brought all elementary students back that were willing and able to come back. It would address some childcare issues. It would address challenges that parents have about keeping their kids engaged in remote learning at the younger age. So it would, it would address some of the concerns that were raised tonight.
Can I say one more thing about it, Allison?
Yes.
I think it also, what I've appreciated about this model, although it is definitely out-of-the-box thinking, is that it also reflects the science that we do know about the virus, which is that students who are younger have much, much lower transmission rates. And so since we, we've seen in the, the science that the older students in the, in the high school may, may actually have transmission rates that are as high as adults, but we know that that's not true of our younger students. So it's also a way to keep the whole community maybe safer while still prioritizing the foundational skills of our elementary students.
So the schedule would be the same elementary schedule and middle school schedule that we showed you before for in-person days. It would just be four in-person days a week. And the remote schedule, that hybrid remote that Bill showed you, would be the same for the high school students.
So for clarif- So, uh, for clarif- So for clarification, if we did this, uh, pre-K through six, um, many kids would be able to go in full in-person. However, there would still be an option for those that need it to be remote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then seven through 12 would be fully remote. And the opposite would be true. Those who need to come in? Would they be able to come in?
No, only the, only the priority special, only the priority at-risk groups.
Right, the priority at-risk group.
Welcome in.
Right, so.
Substantially special needs.
Yeah.
Homeless, foster care.
Yes.
And ELL.
So that's important because fully remote.
Those kids are prioritized to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Given we've heard from quite a few families this evening who've said that they are, they've already decided they're going to select fully remote. Um, but they still want that EPSD, educational experience, access to peers, access to teachers. If we did something like this model, what would that mean for those families who select the, the fully remote for their elementary level kids?
Not sure. So rephrase it, say, ask me again.
Okay. But does, so for families who have elementary school kids who decide that they want to be fully remote because that's the right thing for their families or for their understanding of how public health and the community works. Um, what does remote learning look like for them while other kids are in the building full-time?
So that's going to be, I'm going to show you the fully remote models next, okay?
And, and I mean specifically in relation to this hybrid option where PK through six is full-time in-person. We've already heard that there are families who are going to select fully remote, even if the buildings are open this way.
Yep.
What does remote learning look like for them?
So they would have, they would have the remote, they would have the remote day schedule that we outlined for you, um, a few slides ago. They would have that. And they would have, they would be taught by, uh, East Hampton Public School teacher that was most likely not able to come into school.
Okay.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Um, and so just for reinforcement, pre-K through six would go into the high school, which is a larger building.
They would be dispersed.
Okay.
Through all the buildings. They would take.
We would use the high school as part of that, that's learning because that way everybody could really spread out.
Yes.
Okay.
Want me to pause there for a minute? Okay. So let's talk a little bit about remote learning options. Um, so this could be, whoops, sorry, sorry. So this could be selected as the model of choice for instruction by the district. Um, it could be related to, um, the transmission of the disease. You know, there may be a time when we have to go into this model. Um, all classes are held remotely. Full day schedule, um, meaning an entire daily schedule. Sample schedules that we have shown you already will work in this model. So it's the same kind of schedule. Uh, the daily schedule would include, whoops, sorry. What did I just do? Oh, there we go. Um, would include, um, attendance, would include, um, assignments. Wait a minute, I just want to move your faces so I can read all this. Um, synchronous component every day, meetings, full workday for staff. Um, staff may report to school buildings unless the community is in a stay-at-home order. We're still working that out and there are reasons for that. Of course, staff that are unable medically to come into buildings would not be asked to come into buildings. Um, so something that you should know, uh, in a fully remote model, and I know parents have asked this and I've mentioned it already, but I think it's worth saying again. DESI has, has advised us that we should be prioritizing bringing students with significant special needs into the buildings along with students in foster care, students who are homeless and our ELL students. These groups of students have been shown to have many challenges in a remote learning model. So even in a fully remote model, we would still be welcoming some students into our school if they fall into one of those groups. And I know that's been a concern for a lot of parents, so I want to just make sure people have a minute. I've said it, I think, three times already tonight, but I know someone will still ask the question. Anyone have any questions about that?
Um, real quick, I guess, to follow up, just because it's been such an integral part of people's comments this evening.
Yes.
Is it fair to add on to this list, families with childcare needs? Even though it's not a part of the DESI guidance?
Yeah, it's not a part of the DESI guidance. And I guess we have struggled at the district level. We've had some deep conversations about this. Um, and then what we've, what, what we are get concerned about is we can get to a, well, what about this group? What about this group? What about this group? And then before you know it, we're in a hybrid model and we may not have all the staff we need to do it. So some of the what-ifs, Jonathan, are the working families that you've mentioned. We've also heard from our staff, well, what about childcare for our own children? Can you take them in and educate them? What about families of essential workers? You know, where do we draw that line in the sand? That's hard for us. I don't think that I should have the power to make that decision. You know, um, because someone will get, someone will get disappointed in that, so.
So if I hear you right, though, you're, I was going to, so that was going to be my follow-up is if I'm hearing you right, that could be our decision to make, um, that is a part of this anyway.
It could be, but I, you know, I, I caution that there are a lot of people that will want to get in on. You know, I think we heard tonight from some, from a family with essential workers that have to go in. Um, I can tell you, I've heard multiple times from our faculty. And so which group are you going to say no to, you know, and then the people that need childcare? That's a hard decision to make. But it's up to you.
If I can just add to that, I think that, um, I, I agree with Jonathan that that is something that we should certainly look at. Um, I think that that, however, though, I think that's an area where we need to move away from the theory of it and look at hard numbers. Um, and that's how we would have to figure that out, um, to be able to, you know, after the upcoming survey that's, I mean, there's going to be different stages, right? But we're going to be looking at doing another survey here shortly that will be seeing, sort of getting a, a pulse of where families are right now, uh, in terms of in, outs, uh, you know, choice and stuff like that. So, um, looking at those numbers, looking at number of teachers who are willing to be in the class and starting to really do the hard numbers of what's possible. Um, then we would know whether or not, um, we would be able, able to incorporate, um, either anybody who opted in or anybody who had, you know, had clear essential services for parents or a lottery system or something like that. But I think that it's something that we should certainly look at. Uh, and I think we're going to have to look at the real numbers to be able to dig into that really.
And I, I, just as you were talking, Meron, um, I was thinking about one of the parents that spoke earlier that kind of talked about all these additional services that schools really provide to a community beyond just instruction. And if I'm remembering correctly, there was, uh, perhaps a suggestion that in some ways, um, maybe schools need to, um, and I hope I'm not misunderstanding what that person was saying, but perhaps schools need to move away from some of those services and allow them to be something that is sort of, uh, worked out on the community side. Um, but I agree with you, Meron, that having, you know, concrete numbers is what's really going to be integral to uh, making that particular decision. I think we need to keep it on the table. That's all.
I think it's on the table, but, um, the, the high priority is that if we go remote, this is the population that absolutely has to come first.
Agreed.
Yeah, and teachers are a part of that conversation as well. So that's, you know, we have to have the unions still to agree to be able to, uh, allow these students back into our classrooms by allow, by approving themselves to be in there as well, so.
Right. Very complicated.
So here is a, um, sample schedule. And this is, um, a preschool schedule for fully remote. I have heard, as I'm sure some of you have, maybe some of the parents on the call, for the, for the youngest, littlest ones, parents have reservations. And a lot of parents are thinking, because, you know, I'm not really sure about the course of this disease. I think I'm going to err on the side of caution and keep my children home if that's the privilege that they, you know, that they are allowed to do that. Um, so this is a sample fully remote schedule for preschool. And I, I'll pause, wait, I think I went by this. Oh, that's preschool.
Allison, can I just stop you for one second? We're using the word, we're using the word synchronous and asynchronous, um, learning, uh, and lessons. Can we explain what that is? Because sometimes understanding what that word means and visualizing what it actually means are two different things.
So synchronous means, and if I get this wrong, correct me. Synchronous means that it's, it's live. You're doing it at, at it, like I'm having a school committee at six o'clock. It's a synchronous meeting. Um, asynchronous means that it's scheduled, but you can, you can kind of watch it whenever you want. You can watch it after the fact because it's taped.
Thank you. I think people just have a hard time visualizing what that means.
Yep. So here is a sample and, and Julian, did we have an elementary one? I could have sworn we had an elementary one, but it might be the same exact one as the hybrid one.
Yeah, we definitely do. I was actually just going back through it to see where it went.
Julian has, we've, multiple people have had their hands in this, so.
Well, I'll drop it in. Um, if you want to talk through Whitebrook and High School, I'll, I'll drop it in after that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so here is a sample remote learning plan for Whitebrook. Um, and you can see that there's class one, class two, class three, class four. It is a set predictable schedule. There's time built in for movement, you know, for kids to get up, do something around the house. You know, have a little bit of free time, get the wiggles out. But then they are expected to be zooming with their teacher, doing a lesson and checking in. Um, so, and they may not be actually like on a computer during that whole time. They may watch a lesson, they may engage in a lesson or learning. Then they may get some direction about, um, group work or a project. They may be moving around into different little pairs or groups or doing an assignment, um, on their own at home. Um, so it may look a little bit different. Meredith, I think you're on the call. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I thi- I think that was a great explanation. Um, you know, I think for the different content areas, um, it, classes will look different. Like you said, there could be, um, you know, the, the first, um, launch of the lesson and then students may be working in small groups through the breakout rooms on, um, on some part of the lesson, or they may be working independently and then come back together as a group. I think it'll look different in, in different classes.
Anyone have a question about the middle school remote schedule? All right, here's a sample remote schedule for the high school.
Actually, sorry, can I ask a question before we go on?
Go ahead.
Um, so just to help me understand, um, going back to the previous comment about having a priority groups in-person. So when we're talking about this framework for remote, how do those students, the ones, the, the prioritized students in school fit with those who are not? Are they completely separate groups or is there crossover happening between the in-class like we had before? You were talking about that there was going to be live streaming at the middle school level. So is there, uh, the, the priority groups having any crossover with the students who are fully remote? Five, you know, five days a week?
I think Sarah might be on this call and she might want to weigh in. I think it's a little bit of both, Meredith. I don't think we've actually fleshed it out totally. Because some of the students that have substantially separate, um, needs are in classrooms that are substantially separate. And sometimes they may flow into regular ed classrooms, but we haven't quite figured out how we're going to make that work yet. But if I'm wrong, Sarah's going to tell me.
No, I, no, I, I think, no, I think you're right. I think, um, it's not, eh, like you said, a flexibility. And, um, for those, for those students, it's going to look different for, for different kids. And we're going to have to, uh, you know, figure it out as we, as we go along. Um, I don't think it'll look the same for, for any student that's in a sub-separate, um, program. Some of them will stay just in that classroom as they do during, uh, when we are all in school. And so, and many of them go out, um, to join, um, a mainstream classroom. So whatever, um, whatever, we're going to have to meet, um, individual student needs, just like we do when we're in school. And I, and I feel confident that we can do that.
So I would just add the one other piece to that is obviously we don't want to create stigmas of students who are in school. Um, and so if we are fully remote outside of these priority groups, I mean, when you're regularly in school, they don't necessarily know who has an IEP, who has, you know, certain pieces. Uh, but suddenly if you see that student sitting at Whitebrook, they know they're clearly there for a reason. Whether, I mean, we don't announce who's foster kids, who's homeless. We, I mean, there's a whole reason we don't want to stigmatize those students, uh, with that kind of, um, concern. So I guess there, that, that, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing a lot of TBD on this. But there's, there's obviously, and I'm sure you've thought about it, there's, there's, there's those aspect of this as well that we want to make sure.
So you mean that, are you talking about if there was a student, like physically at Whitebrook, you know, in a program, joining, um, a remote classroom?
Correct. If, if majority of students are remote, um, and taking a remote class and then there's three students who are joining and they're all sitting at Whitebrook, it's clearly that they're in that priority group. Um, and that from a, you know, from a, uh, what's the right word? It's from a sort of personal protection kind of, uh, reasons, you don't, we don't announce those things. So I just wanted to make sure that that's a part of the conversation.
Absolutely. And I, and we have had that conversation. I think there's a lot of creative things that we can do. They will all be attending, you know, via Zoom. And there are certainly things we can do to, um, to make it, um, you know, look the same for everybody.
Even just putting a backdrop behind them.
Absolutely. Or for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the beach one.
Yes.
I was also going to say, if students are going to be, um, allowed to be in school because their parents are working, the rest of the population doesn't have to know, you know, why certain students are there and why students aren't. It just doesn't work out for their family. Just like in a classroom, we're not able to say why when we're making cooperative learning groups, why certain students have to do one thing and others have to do another thing. We just say that everyone has his or her own needs. So I think there's a way to do it and include them when they're going to get into breakout rooms and small groups. And if the teacher knows, um, what students have different friendships within their cohort, that it won't be so challenging to do and include everybody.
Can I just add one thing? Do you mind if I add one thing?
Sure.
Please.
I don't mind.
I, thank you. I think that we have about, I'd say around 50 students, um, who are homeless or in foster care. So there would be some natural cohorts we would build in, um, in those, for those students who are attending, um, school. If the rest of the, the district is in remote, we could have 75 or 80 students being serviced in the district. So we, we could be providing those inclusive opportunities for. So we could be providing those inclusive opportunities for our students who are in substantially separate programs in with these other students. So I think I really worry about the confidentiality piece. It's something we hold, you know, very close in, well, in education in general, but particularly professional education. So it's something that I really thought about. And I wouldn't, you know, envision maybe those that group of students, if they all chose to attend, we could create some multi-age groups. We get really creative around supporting our students with significant special needs. So but I also worried about the students who are homeless. You know, being stigmatized by this. So I think we will, and as Meredith said, you know, we get really creative and flexible with the with this particular group of students. But I appreciate you bringing it up, Maren, because that's a really, really good point.
Yeah. So again, I think that's where this goes from theory into actual numbers and really getting there. Obviously, that's not where we're at tonight, but very clearly we need to get there shortly to be able to really know the exact numbers or as close numbers as we can and start to figure those details out. So thank you.
So I'm just looking at this schedule and so if we're looking at the last block going 12:30 to, I'm assuming that would be 1:10. Is it fair to say that after 1:10, that will be teachers' time to prep every day in this remote plan? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
There is a sample remote schedule for the high school. I don't think it really looks that different from the in-person one. Some Bill or I could take questions, but I think you'll see a lot of similarities in the schedule. And here's our sample remote daily schedule for elementary. So again,
I'm already seeing that there's, I stopped putting the the times in there, but you can see that it's, it would stay consistent through the whole thing. Sorry about that.
So there's consistency. There's an expected schedule. There's predictability for students, for families, so that they know what's coming when. And, you know, I think in this one as well, we don't have it on here for the families, but the teachers would have their their prep time at the end of the day.
Okay. Can I ask when the day would end, looking at this schedule, since we don't have those time pieces? When is the last piece, closing meeting?
Julian, or Jill or Judy?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So I think I was trying, I'm trying to to look at the times. I'm going back on my other draft of it. We have so many drafts of these. I really apologize that this one isn't the one that has the times in it. We've we've closed all of these right around 2:00 PM so that there's an hour of of time at the end of each day for the elementary schedule. So I will go back through and and on the document that you all have linked, the back to school options, I'll I'll put in those times for you. But yes, there will, the on the all of the remote schedules, the preps are daily in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
This is that kind of nuanced piece, remote family choice, we're calling it. This is if we start in a hybrid model or if we are in a hybrid model at some point in the year, but people have made it known that they want to stay in remote. This would be for families that choose to keep their children home. If we start in that hybrid kind of model, district staff would be assigned as a coach per grade level or content area. And so it would most likely be a teacher that your child is familiar with, but this is what I would say about it depending on the numbers. If we only have, and I I doubt this will be the case, but I'm just giving myself some wiggle room here. If we only have, say, two students that take high school chemistry and and two students that take forensics, I may not have enough high school teachers to have two separate classes. They may have to combine those students and kind of monitor the student that's on the chemistry track and monitor the student that's on the forensics track as an example. So we're calling these people the coaches right now. They will monitor the student engagement, assist families, act as a liaison between families and staff. We want to align the family choice program or the family choice option as closely as we can with what's happening in a hybrid model in school. So we want the teachers to be talking. If they're doing planning, we want this person in the coaching position to also be part of that engagement. And there's opportunities. I know people had questions. There were opportunities for project-based learning, particularly in social studies and science blocks. And all right, I'm going to stop there. So those were our models. So we had three options in the hybrid model.
Can I ask, can I ask one more quick question in that remote model? For the for EHS, again, is the assumption that prep for the remote model would be at the end of the day, say at 2:00?
Yeah, it would probably be at that 12:45 point in time that I think was on Bill's models.
Yeah, 12:45, 2:02.
But you have, okay, so within that would be office hours, one-to-one support, support for IEPs, professional development, troubleshooting, technical trouble, team time and prep?
Yes.
Well, if I could
Yes.
weigh in on that. So I don't expect all of those things to happen every day between 12.
Simultaneously.
Right.
I would expect that to be in a rotation.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So if we went with some model in which children would be in schools at some point in time during the year, I want you to know the other piece that we have been thinking deeply about is our buildings and the way that they function. So we have been doing all the things that we need to do as far as thinking about the direction in hallways. We're not going to have two-way traffic on staircases or hallways. Staggering in students' arrival, getting off of the buses, moving into the buildings, utilizing spaces that may have once been used in a different way may now be used as classroom spaces. So we're trying to think of all the things we need to do. We've ordered the signage. We've ordered all the PPE, which is our personal protective equipment. We have the designated spaces for the nurses, including the COVID space, the additional, you know, area that we're mandated to have if anyone is showing symptoms. So we have been thinking deeply about all of that. And let me see, what else did I want to say? Oh, we're also looking at the things that we can do to make improvements in our building for ventilation purposes. So the visual things that we can see, like adding screens on windows that don't currently have them to increase ventilation, that's all happening. But we've also contracted with vendors that can review our HVAC systems and make recommendations on the types of filters that we should be putting in. So we've been taking all of these steps that we need to take as far as our buildings go. I'll pause there for a minute in case anyone has a question about that. Keep going.
I guess I kind of, I mean, it's not a question per se, but I'm just thinking of the amount of time that it's going to take for kids to move through the school and enter the school. You know, following all these protocols, the way that they, we want them to. And obviously, the schedule's pretty tight aside from that. And I guess I just, you know, I take a moment to kind of express my concerns and maybe a little bit of doubt that they'll even, you know, with this stuff in place, that there aren't going to be huge lags and sort of wasted time for education.
Well, you know, I think we we're prioritizing safety when the students are in the school. So we want to take the appropriate time that we need to do to make sure that students are passing in the hallways in a safe manner if they are going into the hallways. You know, they're going to be taking mask breaks. They're going to be taking hand washing breaks if they are in the buildings, which at some point during the year, they most likely will be. So we want to make sure we have been thoughtful about how we're using our building spaces and how we're moving children around our buildings. I mean, I think that for anyone that's going into the workplace right now, you're seeing that even at the grocery store, you know, the direction on the aisles that you have to flow now. You know, we're, we just, I think we've all been adapting to it. It's becoming second nature to us. I think it was maybe an initial like, oh, what is this? And then we're just kind of adapting to it. It is kind of our new normal for right now. I know in our offices, you know, we're we're moving around the building in a certain way at 50 Payson. And that's just what we're doing when we report to work. So it's becoming second nature. And it's becoming part of our thought process. But to also add to what you just said, Jonathan, the commissioner is allowing the mask breaks and the movement to be part of the time on learning hours. So we're not going to be short on our time and learning. That's part of our academic day if we're in person.
I suppose there is value in learning these skills of how to navigate the spaces together so that we can remain safe. And of course, you know, I certainly didn't mean to misconstrue things that, you know,
No, no, no.
I thought that this wasn't the utmost important way to approach it.
Yeah.
So thank you for taking your time to explain that.
So a couple of, I think I have two more slides. Whoops. So I will speak to technology. The technology has been ordered that we need, that we were missing last spring. So we're in a good place with technology. I know people, I didn't hear a lot of it tonight. I think one parent spoke about it, but I think it's probably on the minds of many parents. What about social emotional needs of our children? We're adding two counselors at the elementary level, one to be shared at Center Pepin and one to be at Maple through some grant funds in the special ed department. Additional cost of PPE. Well, I think that right now, I talked to Dale the other day, we're up to about $92,000 in supplies for PPE that we've ordered. We've ordered all the PPE that we need for staff, for students, for nurses, for 12-week supply, and then we can order more if we need to. We have budgeted for the additional cost of a remote learning platform, like a Zoom. Additional staff to cover separating classrooms of students. That's a need that we're currently going to be assessing in the next few weeks, depending on the model that's selected or how we'll have to deploy staff in different ways. And we foresee that we may need some additional staff at the elementary and middle levels, or maybe not additional, but we may need different staff than what we currently have in order to do like a fully remote model. So that may look different. So next steps. I think someone mentioned it earlier, but I'll just repeat it. A survey will go out to parents. Hopefully tomorrow, that we'll have this week to find out their thoughts about returning to school this fall. It will be similar to the last one. So that we can see what people are thinking at this point in time. We're holding a parent forum tomorrow night. We have a staff forum tomorrow. And then the school committee will be the group that is charged with ultimately making the decision by August 10th about the model they want to begin the school year with. And of course, we're impact bargaining with our unions right now. And I think that's all I have. So I'm happy to go back to any slides that you want me to. Or I can close out of this and stop share if that's easier.
Sure. So I have a question going forward. Tonight, what you need from us is to pick a hybrid model. Is that correct?
I'd love it, but it's not, you are not mandated to do that. I mean, you can certainly digest and return to, return to that. You just need to vote a final model by August 10th.
Okay, so.
Between now and August 10th is your timeline.
Okay, so for clarification, we do not have to choose one of these three hybrid models tonight. We have the time to have the parent forums and the staff forums, get some feedback from everybody and choose by August 10th, a hybrid model. Yes?
By August 10th, you have to choose the model you're going to start the school year with.
So how much time do we have before we have to choose a hybrid model?
Well, it depends. Are you going to start the school year with a hybrid model? You have to decide.
Right. So I guess, if I can clarify the question, the plan that, or rather, what will be submitted to the state could just include the three hybrid models as potential plans. Because really, we're, what we're sending to the state has stuff that we're not going to do anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think.
So you, thank you, Jonathan. So yeah, that is my question. We, you're going to send in, say, the 31st, you will send in all three hybrid models. And so we all.
And I mean, if you, if there's one that you hate, I'm happy to take it off the table. I mean, you know, my administrators are currently thinking about three different hybrid models right now. So if you want to narrow that down at all for us.
So Lori wants to speak, but Lori wants to speak, but I can tell you, I'm not interested in taking any of the hybrid models off the table till I get parent and teacher feedback. Lori?
Yes, I've tried to be patient, but I don't think we can be patient anymore, as I said last week. Once again, we have a date of August 10th, and that is far too late. I listened to every parent that spoke. I took names. I took the ages of their children. I wrote down their concerns. And the majority of the parents that have attended this forum want to see a robust, remote model. We are talking a lot about hybrid models. You put a tremendous amount of time into this. I thank every person once again, who has devoted so much time and energy and explored so many different ways to be able to educate our children. But once again, I will say loud and clear, we need to start the year in a remote way. Stop deliberating about a hybrid model. I was shocked to read before that we had already spent $85,000 on bringing students back for 12 weeks. And now I just learned it went up to $92,000. That is two educators, depending on what level they are. And it isn't safe for anyone to return. And I understand that we have to make it safe for those children that need to be there. And I will do everything in my power to have the children that have special needs, that are ELL students, that have working parents, that we make their learning space safe. But right now, we are hearing a majority of the people on this forum say, please give us a robust, exciting model. us a robust, exciting model for our children to learn and not ingenuity. Why can't we use the teachers in our district now? If we wait to August 10th, they're not going to have time to plan. That's an extra two weeks.
Can I just add a comment because Lori reminded me of something? So I want to, thank you, Lori. And if Julianne is still on, she can add to this, but Julianne does have professional development planned all during August for teachers. And in addition to that, I would be looking to have the school committee approve, not tonight because we just made this adjustment, changing the calendar for the start of the school year and pushing the start of school back to September 14th for students. Remote, in-person, September 14th to give teachers additional time for training and for planning because it's not just the training. They need time to then do the planning for the lessons. Because in any model we choose, and I'm fine to go, I want people to understand, the school administrators, myself, we are fine to go with whatever model is selected. But in both of these models, there are remote, there's remote instructions. So that is a focus of our training. So that's going to be what is being rolled out all during August and for those two weeks of additional professional development. So thank you, Lori, for reminding me to say that because I wanted to say it in the beginning.
I just want to echo something Ben said earlier because it really resonated with me. He talked about the wonderful community that's here in front of us on this screen today. And we should be leaders in East Hampton. We shouldn't be waiting for what Desi tells us. And I just want to echo those sentiments. So thank you, Ben, wherever you are on these six screens, because that was a wonderful thing you said. Let's be leaders.
He's on top of you in my screen. He's like the box above you.
So if I can just add something, I think we have had a conversation about this before. And I actually slightly, just to slightly disagree with you, Dr. Leclerc, I think that it's, I think that it would be helpful for the school committee if we could move in this direction to actually have a vote that agrees with that start date so that it does become official tonight and our parents know going forward from tonight that our school year would then start on September 14th on that Monday and have that locked in so that parents at least, yes, we can still continue to discuss what the program's going to be like, but at least then there's no longer the conversation about the earlier school year start. I think it would be, that was a basic number thing that we should do tonight.
I don't have an issue with that. I just, Sue Colby hasn't done that calendar that you usually have in front of you. So if you can do it without that.
Well, the guidance is already coming from the state that that's, you know, that that's supported. I don't know if I want to say encouraged, but indefinitely from the conversations with the union, that's their desire as well to be fully prepared. So I, you know, I don't, I would, I don't know if we want to go down that tangent right now, but I think I certainly support us making a decision and a vote on that tonight to be able to set that in stone for everybody going forward.
Allison, can I just, I just remember at some point, September 14th was the day the Boston Marathon was rescheduled for.
Yeah, and they're not having it. It's not going to be a state holiday. It was going to be a state holiday.
But the date that Desi did give that schools have to start by is the 16th, not the 14th. But I think we could make that determination that it could be the 14th.
I chose the 14th because it allowed for, based on when we were going to return with students, it was originally August 31st. So that gave us two full weeks. And then we would start on a Monday on the 14th. And that would, you know, a Monday is a nice day to start.
And it's my birthday, so it would be a wonderful present to see this all working on my birthday.
Can I just ask a quick question because, and I hate to be like, well, actually, let's, you know, be mindful of the bureaucracy, but do we have to put on our agenda that we're voting on something? That would be a question for Sue Colby if she's out there.
I am.
She's there. She's always there.
Sorry. It's not on, the school calendar is not on the agenda, but I question in this case, it's part of the opening process.
That's what I was going to suggest, is it is part of when we reopen.
Right.
So we can, we could explain it that way. In that case, Madam Chair, would you be willing to accept a motion to open school on the 14th, given Dr. Leclerc's plan to do so?
Do we have a second before we have discussion?
A second.
Okay. Let's have some discussion about that. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Can I, can I just, just to wordsmith, that September 14th would be the first day for students.
Correct.
Faculty would be returning earlier than that. But I mean, I know for the purpose of this call, we don't care about that, but if we could just put students in there.
Yeah, and to clarify, so this was sort of rearranging the professional development that was previously spread out throughout the school year, correct?
Actually, Jonathan, actually, the commissioner, we normally would have a 180-day school year. The commissioner has waived 10 days of it.
Okay, thank you.
For the purpose of putting them up front for professional development. So it wouldn't necessarily be reshuffling. It would be shifting them from student days to professional days.
Great, so then that means that there would still be professional development or time for it scheduled throughout the school year?
That is correct.
Great.
So this would actually give teachers three weeks to prepare, correct? Because they come in, they were scheduled to come in before August 31st. And so they would have from the week before August 31st through September 14th.
Yes.
Any other? Sue?
Teachers are scheduled to come back on the 26th of August.
Correct, that's what I thought.
I guess the one question I have to add to that is also just because of our conversations, we've previously talked about the difference between providing seven days versus 10 days of that teacher development. It sounds like though, that if they're coming back on the 26th, there's, there's not, I mean, there's, some of those were already scheduled days, and then we would be giving them at least nine additional days, is that correct? Or what?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be looking at nine days additional professional development prep time for teachers, and, and then we would start school on the 14th with students.
Yes, and Bill Evans, my buddy, is texting me and reminding me to talk just a little bit about, we would want to go slow the first week, whether we were in a remote model or an in-person model, we would probably want to do a slightly different schedule that week, maybe just focus on half of the students each day or, you know, half of a half if we're in a hybrid model, if you will, just to keep it. And I can give you more information on that at another time, but we would want to make sure that we take the time the first week to really connect students and teachers in a meaningful way, do some of the social emotional things. If they're in a hybrid model, do the PPE kind of things. So we would want to go slow the first week of the 14th.
So I mean, from my perspective, and we haven't heard from Marissa or Shannon yet, but from my perspective, giving teachers extra time to develop whatever we're doing is crucial. So I'm all for it. Marissa, Shannon?
I agree.
I second.
I have no comment.
Okay, any more discussion? So we have a motion to approve starting school with students, not teachers. Teachers will start earlier on September 14th. Okay, and let's have a roll call vote. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt, aye?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. And you all remembered the order that you've been answering, so good job. Okay. All right, so.
I guess the next piece of this, right, is whether or not, I mean, I completely understand the, the need that we don't have to focus the efforts. We don't have to pick a hybrid model. There are, you know, some key different distinctions. I mean, there's the sort of out of box thinking options. There's a half day versus full day. I think that there's some different plans in there that, and clearly, we're not choosing the final one that we're going to start on the 14th. But I guess, I guess the question that comes up in my mind is, do we want to though, put forward an opinion that helps move this administration and teaching, teachers and all those kind of thinking in a direction? You know, if we're all leaning towards half days, should we sort of encourage them to go in that direction? Or do we want to just leave it completely open-ended at this point? And I put that out to the entire group.
I don't think we should leave it open. I think we should, I think we should, I like the hybrid model, I really do, and I think either way that we go, it's going to end up being some type of hybrid model. We have a lot of students that are part of that special group, and our school's going to be hybrid.
Well.
If we're opening up the school to, you know, the specialized group, and there's, there's a long list, I mean, we're essentially working toward a hybrid model.
I think it's really important though, Shannon, that in terms of our language, that is not a hybrid model though. That is, that is considered a remote model because not all students are coming into the classroom. So it will still be that the school is open unless, unless of course, the whole state heads towards a lockdown, that it's still a remote model with the exception to special groups because not everybody's coming into school. So that is considered a remote model.
I see what you're stopping.
From an equity perspective, it's not open to all.
Right, so that, we have to keep, those are definitely very distinct. But again, we don't have to focus that. I think the question in my mind is of the hybrid models, because we have, I mean, the things that are fully on the table that will, will stay there, right, is 100% remote, everyone's remote because we're in lockdown, right? So that's going to be there no matter what we do or say at this point. The remote model that is, also has the exceptions for special groups based on prioritization, that's going to be there and that that's going to be there no matter what we kind of do or say in terms of going forward, at least at this moment.
Correct.
The, the question in my mind is that the hybrid model right now has so many different variables, and it's hybrid only because every student is going to be in that school building at some point in the week. That's what I'm saying. Do we want to try to help focus the direction of our teachers and staff and administrators in where they're going? Or do we leave it open-ended for two more weeks?
It's, it's not just teachers, it's the families too.
And families, yes, of course, I'm sorry, of course.
And, and the idea is that at some point, we will most likely sometime be hybrid anyway. So if we, we should at least know which one we like.
And I can add it to the survey tomorrow and, and take a pulse of families.
I, I really think we should. The one thing.
Find out, to at least find out that they prefer a hybrid model in which students have the ability to come into a building every day, even if it's just for a couple days, or would they prefer a model in which the younger children are prioritized to come into the building and the older children are prioritized to stay home?
Right, my sense tonight was that I really wanted to see how parents would weigh in on that because the, the hybrid model that allows pre-K through six to come in person still allows that option for families to say, I'm not sending my child in, they need to be remote. The, that plan also has full remote for kids who are seven through 12, and they usually do better with remote. But again, that has the option that says, we, you know, my kid can't be remote, they must come into the building. So there's, I like that, but I'd like to see what parents and teachers felt about those three hybrid models. I do think that we should, I understand, Lori, that you're asking that we just blanketly say remote now, and I'm not saying that's off the table, what I'm, I, I think it, it would be beneficial to find out what everybody thinks, at least I believe so, about the three hybrid models that were presented. Because I'd like to know whether it's for the future or whenever. It's so.
I agree, I agree with that, Cindy. I just fear that if we wait for that magic August 10th date, then teachers won't have enough time to prepare. Families really won't know what's going on. So when I was saying that we need to be leaders, it's because I feel that we need to choose before, and I'm more than willing to wait to get the survey results.
Right.
If Dr. Leclerc puts them out tomorrow by Friday, we have a work session on Monday. There's no reason that we need to vote on anything tonight because I want to hear from the community.
Right, and we have a full school committee meeting dedicated just to the reopening of schools basically for August 4th. So I'm comfortable with August 4th being our decision-making time after we've heard from everybody. I do think people should at least have the chance to weigh in what they think about those models. I, I mean, that's just my opinion. I want to hear from everybody, please.
I have one more question. Can I just ask about the masks?
Yeah.
If mask breaks, if, if the kids are in school, even the children that need to be there, if it's raining outside, where are they going to have their mask breaks? Who is going to be watching these mask breaks? Where are they going to be with these mask breaks, especially the elementary school children?
So that's one of the functions that we would assign to support staff and to our specialist teachers, P E, art, music. And we could use spaces like the cafeteria and the gymnasium. We envision putting squares or circles like in those spaces similar to like, I've seen them in parks in New York City on, on pictures, so that kids have like a, a space that is their own space. And we've talked just anecdotally about, they could take their masks off, they could, you know, grab a jump rope and jump rope for a few minutes in their circle or in their square or do some activity just to kind of, you know, get some fresh air, if you will, if it's an inclement, inclement weather situation.
And I think especially in light of what just transpired at Bay State with a staff member in a break room, we have to think about where teachers are going to be able to have breaks and feel comfortable and be safe. Another two steps.
Mary LaChapelle, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, I, an amazing amount of information, you know, from during public speak, but also by Allison, you and your team and, and Julianne and, and just plus, plus, plus. And, you know, I, I want wholly support school not starting when we expected it to. I'm delighted to hear that, that we all agreed and voted on that. The teachers deserve more time to, to be thoughtful and also learn new skills. I think I made all of those points last night or the night before. What I do wonder when I hear all of these different models, I, I What I do wonder, when I hear all of these different models, I, I really want to hear from parents of what they thought about all this information, but the other thing that just kind of crossed my mind, is that we have these, these different models, um, that we need to prepare for DESI, and I understand that, and I think it was Lori's comment about leading. The information we're, we're provided today, we're put into those, their criteria, but, but I guess my question is, or, or my thought is, all of the different things provided, whether they were in DESI buckets or not, seem very likely for us as a school district to use between September fourteenth, if we do open that time, and the end of the school year, right? And, and I'm, I'm, in, instead of sweating the details, which shows, I'm not a teacher, and when I was a teacher, I knew better not to be a teacher, but to think about where we are right now with these ideas of how to learn and how to engage children and families and parents, and tie them to health metrics. So when, when it's phase three, step two, right? Where are we in our, where are we in our continuum of, of operations as a school district? What will, what, if, if we go back to phase two, are, are we then automatically going all to remote? I, you know, I mean, a part of the wax and wane of this is that the plan, right, just like the, the reopening phases, and how it was tied, um, the, there was gating, right? So we knew if we went through this gate, health metric gate, we were going to phase two. Now, we also know if we hit certain numbers, which we're kind of on the trail to, to hit it, going over two percent of rate of infection, then we're going back. And I'm just wondering, is there a way to do that health wise? I mean, I, I hear loud and clear the parents and, and families and kids who are like worried about how do they, you know, you know, working and not working and balancing it all, and if somebody gets sick. But before all that, we're still in a health crisis, it's still a pandemic, and I'm, I'm just, and you can tell I'm still working through it, it's like, where are we tying the health metrics into this? You know, where, can we get an epidemiologist? I mean, someone out there must have some kind of formulas or, or something that looks at the numbers and square feet that we have and tie them to the six health metrics that the Department of Public Health has, has put up to parents, and we know what to expect. So that's a, not completely formed thought, or hypothesis, but I, I did want to get it out there. But that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Maren?
I think along those lines, too, I guess part of what my thinking was, and it's sort of pretty similar to what you're mentioning there, Mayor, is sort of like, um, you know, if we are in a lower phase, you know, say phase two or three, for not, not defining it, but just sort of to put it roughly, like, phase two or three means we're still pretty early and not sure where we're at, then that could be a half day hybrid model, where then if we're phase four or five, then we're in a full day model, hybrid model kind of thing. Um, or if it, you know, if we're fully out of the phases, then we could be going into a full in-person thing that we could be choosing at a later date. So I think that that's at least where some of my mind goes, when you start to think about sort of watching the, the, the science that's choosing what phase we're in, and linking that to our type of model that we would be choosing.
And I don't feel any restriction for us to be able to, um, listen to the community, pick a hybrid model, and then make a different decision based on where we are at the time. I think we're, the, it's clear right now, we're listening to the community and to what everybody, um, is thinking, and we just want them to be able to weigh in. I don't think we, you know, no matter what we choose, um, even on the fourth, as a hybrid model, I don't, I believe, uh, when I asked everybody if we could have, uh, meetings every week, my true belief is that I, even if we today said, oh, we're all going to be hybrid and, and live happily ever after, we need to meet every week to decide that that's actually what's going to happen, because this is such a rapidly changing event, that all we can do is have a vision of what might happen, and then go along with whatever does happen. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, Sharon? Another thing that, that struck as I'm looking by through my notes, also, when we're making this, this decision and, and taking this vote, and, and maybe, um, Dr. Leclerc wants to jump in, the guidance that I have read from DESI says that, that students can change, like, say, a family selects all remote, it doesn't work, they can go into another, um, like a hybrid model, right? A concern that I have with that is, we're walking into exactly what you described, an unknown environment, and if, if a family has to wait forty-five days, which I understand on the operational side of it, I mean, I completely get, like, kids can't be hopping in and out and, and whatnot, but I'm just thinking, this is such an unknown, I do have a concern for the student where remote's not working on phase fifteen, and then do they have to wait all that, like, what happens in the in-between? Or a parent who is a, you know, um, a frontline worker, or cha-, yeah, so I, I, I'm not necessarily looking for answer, but I do have that as a concern, if, as we put together a model and having, you know, forty-five days, a parent, a family can like review what kind of, of educational services they're getting, and if it's working, forty-five days, I mean, if you know on day five it doesn't work, forty days is a long time.
Yep, and, and that's kind of why I feel that we need to, uh, meet every week for the foreseeable future, until we all decide we don't need to anymore, just so that we can address all these issues, Maren, stop laughing, just so we can address all these issues as they come up, because who knows what's going to come up? There are going to be roadblocks, this is not going to be a perfect plan for anybody. We are going to, no matter what, there, there, somebody's going to be disappointed, and we're all stressed. There is no way that we're, even if, uh, parents are happy with their plans, they're still going to be stressed. It's just the way it is.
So, just to take the pulse here, because it's nine forty-five, and the agenda that you put forward, Cynthia, is still more items on it. You know, it sounds like we're comfortable with giving no further advice as of right now, in terms of the hybrid model. And there really was no needed clarification in terms of the two types of remote learning, and we're all agreement of the, that at current standing, we are not putting forward any full in-person model forwards. So I, I guess then I would ask, you know, is that, should we make that proposal now? So that then that is at least a decision by this body to move forward, and then we can deal with some other pieces there.
Right, I was, I was hoping that we would make a motion to give the community time to respond, and to, um, talk about a hybrid model on August fourth. So does someone want to make that motion?
You don't have to make a motion.
That's kind of kicking it down the-
What?
We're just kicking it down-
Allison has to put it, has to turn something into DESI on Friday.
Right.
Right, so what we're, we're the decision we're making-
I'm, I'm good, but I, I, I can, it's very simplistic what I have to turn in, so.
Sue, so we're going to turn to you, we're going to turn to you and ask, can we just kick the, this can down the road a little bit? Uh, or should we have a motion to, uh, delay the discussion until August fourth?
I'm, I'm fine, you don't, you don't need to do anything for my sake.
Okay, Sue? Do we need to vote?
I don't believe so, if Allison is saying she doesn't need anything, then I don't think you need to vote.
Cool.
Yeah, what I'm submitting to DESI is draft-
You have to agree with us, right?
There you go.
Shannon?
You're submitting to DESI what we just went over, right?
Yes, and it's going to, it has to be in draft form, so if I need to, you know, if we tweak along the way after, that's fine.
Okay. But Dr. Leclerc, didn't we need just one hybrid version, or you can send in all the different versions?
I think I can put in, uh, really, I have two basic ones, I have the two day in, three day out, or I have the four, five days in for the younger kids.
And I like the out of the box piece.
Quiet, right, once he's-
And I like the out of the box, so I would just, um, be happy with you submitting all three, and just saying you have a stubborn school committee that wants to wait a little bit, you know, um, take the pulse of the community. I do have a question about the forms of the survey, and Jonathan, I promise I will let you weigh in. I think we have two questions that are really, um, important to ask everybody. Were there, was there one of the three hybrid models that people liked? And how is everybody feeling about remote? Because we heard a lot of remote, um, tonight, from the community, and I think we need to send that survey out and, um, give them a chance. So Jonathan, and then Maren, if that's okay? Jonathan?
Couple things real quick, uh, first was just to add on to what Maren said earlier, when he sort of broke down everything that we've kind of talked about to move forward with. There's also the additional piece of, we are beginning in earnest to plan for a remote education, um, and that sounds like it's already happening to some extent. What was your question, Cindy? My other thing was, there's, so there's a, this staff forum tomorrow, and one thing that I was concerned about was, it seemed like there was some pushback from staff about monitoring lunches, that there are some folks who are uncomfortable with that. And as we go through bargaining, I wonder if there, if that's something we need to mind as far as the feasibility of a full day hybrid model. If they're not, if they're not willing or comfortable to do that, then is it something that we can even feasibly kind of, um, consider? So as we sort of talk with the staff over the next, you know, short period of time, if they could continue to weigh in on that, that seems valuable.
Maren?
So the, the things that I would add to that survey, um, I think this is a time to start to get some of the minutia. So I would recommend, I mean, yes, asking, you know, do you plan to keep your child remote? You know, of the hybrids, do you want a half day, do you want a full day, or do you support the, you know, pre-K through six versus seven through twelve? Uh, but then the two pieces, things that I think that are really important, um, and maybe that's three, but I do think we should have a dropdown menu that says, uh, what grade is your student? And have an option for a second or third student as well within the survey, so that person can, or maybe we have those, we ask those parents to take the survey for each child, I don't know how best to do that, but, um, maybe that would help us get, again, some of that minutia. Also, asking in that same spot, you know, are, do, is one of, is their student considered, um, within the priority, or not? You know, is there, is that student a special needs or homeless, or, you know, foster care, or, uh, ELL? So, um, that would help us start to get some of that minutia. And then, uh, there was another one, um-
If working parents need to have their children in the school.
If you were, if you were a working parent, would you choose, would you want to be added to that priority group? Be included or not?
And I think, I'm sorry, could we also add, if you are a teacher in the district, how will these models affect your family? Because we have quite a number of teachers in the district, who live in East Hampton.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we have another meeting tomorrow with the union. I think that, um, we need to start asking them to give us some level of that minutia as well, to start to look at, you know, maybe all the first grade teachers are ready to be in there in school, but none of the fifth grade teachers or something, I mean, I, you know, um, I think starting to try to hold that, even as we continue to have these conversations, is going to give us that minutia to start to line things up, and, and that will help, look at, you know, what we're looking at next week to make some, some decisions.
We don't have negotiations tomorrow, we have the Friday. The staff meeting is tomorrow, and the family forum is tomorrow. I just want to clarify, I mean, we're all in so many meetings, it's, it's hard to keep track.
Yeah, Friday, sorry.
All right, I got a question. So on the survey, I mean, Allison, are we really reaching some of these families that we need to reach? I mean, do you feel like you got some responses from them last time?
Well, you know, it's hard to tell, Shannon, I send it to every email address that we have for district families, so that would be, I push it out the same way people would get snow call notices, or conferences, you know, I, I use that same tool, so most people have an email address. And I have to say that, um, when I did the last family survey, we had five hundred responses.
Out of how many?
Well, we have fifteen hundred children in the district. How many separate families that is? I think I got, I think I got a pretty good percentage with five hundred.
Oh, no, I'm just asking, how many emails did you send, like, how many email addresses?
Oh, well, I send, when I push it out, I think it goes to eighteen hundred email addresses, but some of them are, like, moms and dads are both signed up. I also include school committee administrators, um, I include city council. So if I do all that, I'm sorry, if I do all that, it's about fifteen hundred. If I add teachers, it's about eighteen hundred.
Okay, so I'm going to ask everybody on this call that's listening to tell your friends, tell your neighbors, and make sure that they get the survey filled out, please. Of course, everybody's probably not listening, but-
Can I just say, can I just say one thing? We do have our, the ELL teacher that works at Whitebrook in the high school. Every time something like a survey or a mass communication, she does reach out to all of our ELL families to see if they need assistance with it or help with it, so we know we are reaching those families.
Thank you, Maren.
Excellent, thank you.
Same is true with the elementary schools as well.
Okay, good.
Hi, am I allowed to jump in, Cindy? I just want to give a quick, we're almost out of the topic of surveys. So we did, we did send out a student survey yesterday as well, um, so that went to all students in the district. It was also posted on Facebook. It went to all students in the district, and then it was sent also to families, so they would know that we were sending it out. We, we, this was as a result of the wellness committee, so we had, our first question to the students was, do you feel safe and ready to return to a school building? Um, and then we asked them, like, how did remote learning work for you, what worked well? What are you doing to take care of yourself, what do you need us to know? So I have that survey closing on Friday, um, so-
So you have it to share with us next week?
Yes, I, of course I will, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll sort of tally the data, and we, we also asked, um, the students what grade they're in, so we can look at it by grade as well. So it's, it's, it's going to give us some anecdotal data, but I think we really wanted to hear the voices of our students as well.
So again, I'm trying to, to buy everybody some time to think about this, could we get all the survey results on Monday? Is that possible?
And, and I would suggest trying to-
My question, sorry, Maren, if they come back on Friday, is Monday too early? I, I really just think people need time to digest, now I'll be quiet.
Go ahead, Maren.
So I just think that we're, we've got a lot of big things ahead of us, um, digesting and conversing about that data, um, I think will be one piece. Um, instead of trying to think that, I know originally you had put out there that we were going to have a Monday working group and a Tuesday school committee, um, instead of trying to slam it all into another five, six hour marathon, maybe we keep the Monday and Tuesday, um, and make Monday more a, a general survey digestion conversation, and Tuesday then would be more to dive in, back into really trying to make a decision about where we're going to start on the fourteenth.
Thank you, Maren, that was my question, the, the work, um, sessions really are, um, as needed, and we were going to, I got you all prepared for week, uh, weekly ones, but, uh, it really is as we need them, so does everybody like the idea of digesting all the survey results? So does everybody like the idea of digesting all the survey results on Monday? Yes, at a work session? Okay. And then on Tuesday, it should shorten some of that, uh, that meeting. Excuse me?
I said, great, can we move on?
Yeah.
I have to get up in the morning and go to work.
I don't blame you. Are we ready to move on?
Cindy, can I ask a quick question about the surveys? Cause like my daughter did not get, what age did you send out the student survey for?
Sure, that would be you.
We did a K to five survey and a six to 12 survey. And also the principals, um, sent those surveys, the ser- the links to the surveys to parents.
I didn't get that, any of those surveys.
Okay. Your EPSD email?
Not on my school email or my private email, no.
Will you shoot me?
Check spam.
Okay. I might have gotten other ones, but not that one.
You send me an email, Andrea, after.
Okay, thank you.
I also didn't get that, so.
So that's, that's, um, important information. So can we send out to everyone in the district, um, a notice that we are sending these, uh, surveys out? And if they did not receive them, to please contact, uh, someone and get the, get the information, get the survey sent to them? Cause that is really important. I don't want anybody left out. Is that okay? It gets some sort of message? Okay, great, great. Whew. All right. So we're on the superintendent update, the survey results update and the school building project update. They're the, on, still on your piece. Do you have anything you want to share tonight?
No, I think with, you know, because it's getting so late, I'll, I'll, I'll be done there.
Okay, so we're going to pass on those two. Okay. Um, so then if everybody has in their packet, there were two proposed, uh, resolutions that, um, I would have, um, Marissa read. And one is a resolution on COVID expenses that a lot of schools signed. And another one is an anti racism, uh, resolution. So if we could look at those, we could, um, we could go on, change gears. So do you have those, Marissa?
Do you? You'd like me to read them out loud?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So the first one, um, I'm losing my voice as it gets later into the night. Um, resolution on COVID-19 state funding. Whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation and material expenses required to do this. And whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19.
So do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
I move to accept. And the second?
Well, who moved? I'll second if I didn't move.
Any discussion? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Sharon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Baron Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. Thank you.
Good.
Next.
Um, school committee anti racism resolution. Whereas as schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil right of obtaining a free and appropriate public education, it is the responsibility of each school to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And whereas it is the responsibility that every district provide to all district staff, including school committee members annual professional development on diversity, equity and inclusion. And whereas every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic racialized practices and implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas every district will incorporate into their curriculum, the history of racial oppression and works by black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas we as a school district, sorry, I just lost my, I scanned down, where are we? Um, where we as school district leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate that continue to plague our public and private institutions. Resolves that East Hampton and all the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity and inclusion is embedded in practice for our students, families, faculty and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti racist. That acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until black lives matter.
I move, we accept the resolution.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Okay, do we have any discussion?
I would just, um, suggest that I hope that resolving, um, toward anti racism on a night when we have been unable to address the, um, concerning SRO issue. Um, I hope that the community will take this not as an act of hypocrisy, but in fact, an act of commitment that we are very concerned about our students of color and that we are very eager to return to this conversation in a future meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I, I hope that they understand that the only reason why the next two meetings are so focused on reopening is because, um, time is of the essence on this. And on August 11th, we still have time to, to discuss all of the sinful. So thank you.
All right. One other thing that I would like to add in here too, though, uh, sort of along these lines too, is that, um, we need to have a discussion about the diversity position, uh, in our school district. Um, and I'm concerned with the current status of that. Uh, and so I, I feel like it needs to be put on our agenda, uh, to be able to have a discussion as a school committee about how that position is being managed, um, and how it could potentially be going, moving forward into the new school year.
And it's parent engagement. Just clarifying.
Say that again, Shannon?
Parent engagement.
Parent engagement, yes. Position.
Is Jo- Julie and Sila diversity coordinator, right? Yeah.
Okay. I think that's a good idea. So we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for the 11th. Okay? Okay. All right. Um, so any other discussion or we'll do a roll call vote? All right.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Sharon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
You're on mute, Mayor.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. Excellent. Okay, so, um.
Can I clarify one other thing too? I'm sorry to just keep adding little things, but another thing that I'd really like to add for that discussion about the SRO. Um, it's, I would like to have some data, uh, provided as well, um, as a part of, uh, the general discussion about the concept of an SRO and what the police or the school district may be choosing. Uh, I would really like some back data on examples of what the SRO has been dealt with, uh, and what his role has been in terms of actual cases or anything else, any of the statistics of what his role has been doing and working on. Um, and how that would be, help us impact into our decision. So please, please as, uh, Allison is your team and, and as the police chief is preparing or whoever's preparing that presentation, um, to please include real, actual data, uh, as a part of that conversation.
Mayor?
Um, uh, to that, that point, it would be, um, um, I think it's important to get a copy of the current MGL as it relates to school resource officers and what the mandate is on, on the, the state level, but also, um, how the conversation around SROs is viewed by the attorney general's office and the agreement we signed with the attorney general some years ago.
Um, I've read both of them and it's not a requirement as of 2018. You can ask for a waiver as in regards such, um, an SRO. And in the MOA with the attorney general, it does say if East Hampton pub, if, if East Hampton Public Schools were to retain an SRO, blah, 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 blah. We are not required by them.
So maybe this is a question to Sue Colby, that if those two pieces of items could be included in our, uh, meetings it, for the 11th, so that we have that language all right in front of us. Um, as well as, I mean, we had a resolution about our relationship with the SRO as well, uh, with the school department, with the police department. So if that document could also be included in our, uh, meeting notes for that day, then we could have all three of those documents to be able to look at and have freshly in all of our minds.
Sue, what you sent me was just the addendum to the MOA? I don't have the original. The original was signed on October 24th, 2017. And like I said, it was in the minutes from that meeting, but they're really hard to read.
Okay.
So I don't know if Chief Alberti has it.
It, it is probably in the office. I don't have that document at home.
Oh, you're still not working in the office. Sorry, I never.
I have it in the office as well. I'll be there, there this week.
Okay. You were copied on the email.
Thank you.
Okay, so we good? Ready to move on?
Can I make, I, I just, and it has nothing to do with SRO. It's regarding the next item on the agenda.
Uh huh.
And I think this is an important piece of the, um, agenda. However, it is really late and I don't think it's something we should be going over right now. Is there any way to move it to another meeting?
Um, we can let Sue weigh in on that. I don't have a problem if everybody, um, wants to do that. Sue, the question is, the superintendent evaluation report. Um, can it be put on the August 4th and taken off tonight's agenda?
That's up to you, Ms. Chair.
I think we're all very tired. Um, if everybody could give me a thumbs up if you would like to move it to next week's meeting.
Uh, I have a suspicion that we're going to be really tired during next week's, next week's meeting too, but I'm okay with it.
Uh, Dr. Le- I'd like to ask, yeah, I wanted to ask Dr. Leclerc because I know.
I would too, like.
Um, I, I mean, my preference would be to have it done. I mean, it was, it was, I, it was, it's for the last academic year and now we've switched into a new year. So.
Correct.
I think we, we waited an extra month, so. But I'll, I'll defer to the, I'll, I'll let the group decide.
Well, um, so let me just toss this out very quickly before we decide. I, I, I have simply, this is a summary. We do not go over every comment, every item, every indicator. It is a summary of the average of all the scores. So, um, what I have typed up is one page and a paragraph. I speak pretty quickly. Um, I'm okay with, um, taking it, checking it off our box right now. Um, but it's up to you guys. Maren is saying, yes, go ahead. Marissa is nodding her head.
I can go either way.
Okay, all right. So Mayor, do you have a few more minutes to stay with this? Okay, good. All right. Um, and Shannon, are you okay? I will, I'll read quickly.
Sure.
Okay, all right. So, um, this is just a real quick explanation. As I said, we do not, uh, we do not go through the whole thing. Um, evaluations are done by six school committee members and the mayor. The final, uh, uh, valuation is an average of all of the evaluated score. It should be noted, it's just something I think that, uh, is really interesting that because of the pandemic and unprecedented school closures, teacher evaluations were suspended when we went to distance learning. But the evaluation of superintendents continued. Teacher evaluations are confidential. Superintendent evaluations are announced publicly. There are three goals, professional, student learning and district improvement. Each is rated as did not meet, some progress, significant progress met and exceeded. It was determined that Dr. Leclerc met her professional goal. She made significant progress on her student learning goal. And she made significant progress on her district improvement goal. She was assessed on four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. The ratings of these standards are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. Standard one is instructional leadership and she was found to be proficient. Most evaluators found that although education was disrupted by the pandemic, Dr. Leclerc had been making progress on all indicators. Standard two is management and operations, and she was found to be proficient. Most evaluators found that although she was restricted by a budget with a zero percent increase, Dr. Leclerc used determination and careful thought to preserve instructional services. Standard three is family and community engagement. On this standard, she was given three needs improvement and four proficient for an overall rating of proficient. Her quick response to delivering meals to families in the community was seen as po- as a positive as well as her weekly updates. But there is a sense that Dr. Leclerc needs to work on improving a two-way communication between herself and the community. Evaluators believe that although her written communication is clear, organized and informative, she needs to work on drawing the community in routinely for two-way communications. She informs the community, but evaluators want stakeholders to feel that they are always heard. Standard four is a professional culture, is professional culture, and she was found to be proficient. Most evaluators believe that she is always professional and prepared and that she has done very well leading the district through extraordinary times. It should be noticed that six of the seven evaluators gave Dr. Leclerc an overall rating of proficient. And one evaluator rated her as needs improvement. Thus, Dr. Leclerc's overall rating is proficient.
Can I just, can I just say thank you? I, I appreciate the feedback and I will, um, I think Cindy's going to share those with me so that I can review them and, um, work to make some improvements going forward. I think there's always positive to have something to aspire to, so I will reflect on that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie?
I always like everyone to understand because people who don't deal with evaluations don't understand that something like exemplary is very rarely given. In fact, the description given by Desi says to be a model for the state. So because you don't hear a lot of exemplaries, don't think that, you know, like for students who don't get As, it's nothing like that. Exemplary is far above and beyond. So I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that it's, it's a bad grade to be proficient because it's very good.
Thank you. In fact, if you look at the, um, evaluation guide, it's graded in because that's the target. The target is proficient. So thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Anybody else? No? Okay. And thank you. And I thank you for the hard work that everybody did doing those evaluations. Um, we are almost done. So the, the bulk of the meeting is over. We just have to fly through, um, accounts payable and, uh, school payroll and minutes. Hit it, Marissa.
All right. Um, I make a motion to accept the accounts payable. Accounts payable dated 6/18/2020 in the amount of $226,951.54.
I'll second that.
Okay, one. Marissa answered.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Sharon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
You're on mute. You can leave it open there. You can leave it open there.
I'm sorry, my dog is going to start barking. Um, Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable dated 7/2/2020 in the amount of $327,207.31.
I second that.
Marissa?
Oh, sorry, Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the school payroll dated 6/18/2020 in the amount of $1,021,615.39.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the payroll dated 7/2/2020 in the amount of $423,397.40.
Second.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the payroll dated 7/16/2020 in the amount of $367,262.99.
Second.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Three more things.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from our regular meeting on June 9, 2020.
I second that.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the June 22, 2020 executive meeting minutes to be withheld until the matters are resolved.
Second.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I make a motion to accept the minutes dated July 6, 2020 from the executive meeting, again, to be withheld until these matters are resolved.
Second.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Uh, Mary LaChapelle, aye, sorry.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. I have a quick question. Is there any other?
Anybody says anything, I'm going to beat you.
Monday is, Monday is at 5:00 PM, correct? And Tuesday is at 6:00 PM, correct?
That's fine with me.
I thought Mondays were at four, five is at four, but four has been the dip.
Yeah, you're right.
How about five? Cause Shannon doesn't get out of work till before.
4:30 is a compromise.
Right, 4:30 it is.
Can we do 4:30? Okay, any other other? Cause otherwise let us have a motion to-
I move, we adjourn.
I second that. I did it first.
Okay, go to sleep. Marissa?
Oh, Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, buenas noches.
Maren Goldstein, good night.
Uh, Mary LaChapelle, aye, and goodbye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. And I want to thank everybody who was on here. I know there's some people still on. I want to thank you so much for your involvement. This was really, um, great to hear from you and we will see you next Tuesday. Bye, everybody.
Be well.
Bye.
Stay safe.